Good morning. I call to order the May 18th regular meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board. Note that all members are present, so we do have a quorum. And I invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is adjustment or approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a couple I'd like to offer. I make a motion, in the interest of using our time wisely, under Old Business, I believe that the number-one item, the Chapter 32 discussion, should be held first. But the item four on Amusements is a discussion that we'll actually be looking to take a vote on, and I believe that should be moved up to number two. And the other two discussions are just discussions, and they can be held after the potential vote on amusement facilities. I make a motion that item four be moved to item two.
A second motion.
All in.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Madam Chair, I have a couple more motions, I guess, that will go under New Business. Would you like to hear all three, or you want me to make them individual motions?
Well, let's hear what you got.
Why don't I make the motions? So, Madam Chair, the Town Council has been reviewing the West's top 10 UDO items, and they come up with the top three, I think, at the prompting and maybe the reordering last meeting. And so I'd like to talk about the Town Council, the UDO priorities, and that we talk about having special meetings for them. So I'd like to put that under New Business.
I think that will... I expect that to happen during Staff Report, and if there are any special meetings, concerns that come out of that, we can do that then.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion to have a discussion, and to put on the agenda under New Business a discussion. Take a few minutes to discuss it. Can I make a vote on the motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that would item number one under New Business, discussion of council priority.
Madam Chair, I'd again make another motion for a second item under New Business. I had offered some questions about signage. The signage ordinance here is rather weak, and we've been talking about it for a long time. We've got a few businesses that I think are going overboard, and I've asked for sort of a review of that by the planning director. I haven't heard anything until I just came in today. I'd like to have a discussion on some signage questions. I don't expect to name the business or talk about the business directly, but just the legality and the conformance of the signage that they have and what we're doing about it. So I ask that the second item be put under New Business.
Is there a motion? A second?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, members. And the third item that I have under New Business is, I also asked about the ethics questions. So when we signed accepting the ethics questions, we were accepting, excuse me, we were accepting the new ethics changes. And I'd like to, it said on the bottom that we could ask questions. I've asked questions. I haven't heard anything on those questions. I think we should take a few minutes to talk about those questions that I had, and see if any other members have questions as well. If we could have, since we're being ignored when we ask questions, I ask that we discuss it, and we'll put it under New Business. It'll happen later on after the meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Those are the agenda changes that I have to recommend.
So we have item 1.4 under Old Business becomes item 1.2. 1.2 becomes 1.3. 1.3 becomes 1.4. And we have three items of New Business, first being council priorities, the second being signage questions, and the third being Code of Ethics questions.
That's perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And the minutes we have before us are minutes from the last meeting, a regular meeting on April the 20th. Are there any edits?
Madam Chair?
From the minutes?
I rise again to ask for modification to the minutes. At the last meeting, I had a four-page board report, and I handed that in and submitted it electronically to the clerk and the planning director. And instead of my board report being included in the minutes in its entirety, as simple as it could be to attach it, my comments were summarized in normal fashion, but not put in in their entirety. I'd like to make a motion that my board report, and if need be, I can explain why those items in the board report were important enough to be included, but I'll just pause there and just make the motion that my board report, in its electronic form, either be copied into or attached to the minutes from last meeting.
If I can add to that, please. The minute, the board report that you submitted is already in my minutes book as an attachment. I don't put any attachments to the minutes for approval before the board. I don't do that for council either, because it's lengthy.
I'm not sure I understood that, because I read the minutes. You saying they're attached in here or something?
No, so they're attached, they're already in my minutes book. They're already in the book as an attachment to these minutes.
But if somebody went online and wanted to see the minutes, would they get my board report?
No, they don't get attachments to the minutes online, because, again, that would be like, you know, 100 pages for council, for example.
It's only four pa, I don't necessarily worry about council. I worry about my four pages in my board report, that the public would be aware of those issues and concerns that I raised. And Madam Chair, you asked me to be brief, because of the three hours that we spent on trees last week, and I was. And so I could have read the report, and I guess how do you send something in to have it submitted to the minutes in its entirety? Is that not possible?
Well, in other words, from what I understand, what the town's policy is, is that attachments are in the minute book, they're not posted online, or there's not a link to them separately online.
My board report couldn't?
Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
Would it be possible to do that with the board report?
They're the board's minutes, so whatever the board would like to do.
Madam Chair, maybe to make it easier and to not add any technical complications to it, not that, I'm not making any comments on anyone's technical ability, but I do know that the public probably doesn't want to have another attachment to an attachment to download. Maybe just copy my minutes, maybe just copy my comments right into the minutes, and say, "These were submitted by Callahan to be included in the minutes." I think that would be easier, but I'm not going to worry about how you do it. I'd just like to have the minutes in, and I apologize to all the folks here having to listen to all of this stuff at this time. Madam Chair.
Lisa, do you have a preference?
No, ma'am.
I make a motion that my minutes get, my board report gets copied somehow into the board, into the meeting minutes from last week. I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you, members, and I would certainly give you guys the same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonn.
And I just found, Madam Chair, on page seven, Lisa, just a minor, I think it's just...
That's okay. That motion didn't approve the minutes anyway, so you still need a motion.
But it's second paragraph on page seven, I think, the next to the last line in the second paragraph, I think what we were intending to communicate was, rather than just pay the fine than protect trees, instead of trees.
Yes, let's just type that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that correction.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I see a lot of people sitting out there, so I am assuming y'all came to say something, perhaps, to us, as well as to speak.
It's an invitation.
It is an invitation. We run this just like the council, public comments. Come to the podium, state your name and address, and we try to keep it to three minutes if we can.
I'll be very brief. I'm Phil Dudley, 218 Sellers Street. I sent you all a brief note, thank you to those that responded, addressing the tree ordinance, as I call it. I guess it's Chapter 32, verse 76, H1. We double the credits for tree planting, if it's a three-inch D V H and it's a live oak, but then we double it again in the table. Surely, we don't mean to quadruple it. Thank you for your effort to clean up the UDO. I think this is an item that needs addressing. Surely, we don't mean to leave it as it is now, whereby you can clear a lot and merely plant three live oaks back. I just have to say something about trees. I'm sorry, we can't ignore the fact, this strip of sand wouldn't be here, but for the roots in the ground, the windbreak that the foliage provides, it wicks away stormwater, which is a perennial problem here, adds value to real estate, sequesters carbon. Thank you for what you're doing for the town.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
My name is Derek Williams. I live at 125 Southwest 5th Street, and I'm following Phil because he, I won't go back into it, but he hit the high point, and that is, that little sentence in 3276 really is, kind of really minimizes the amount of planting that you would have to do. I hope that you will, a simple thing would be just to take that line out. One other comment I do have, though, is in terms of process, the other thing that is in Section 3275, which is more about the process, the 3275 reads, "The vegetation plan will be reviewed by development staff in compliance with the requirements and guidelines provided in Section 3276," and 3276 is the very important section. My question is, Development Staff Services, it would seem to me that this line ought to specifically say, "The town forester." You've gone through great detail to put forester into the mix. The forester is the person that should be meeting first before anything is developed and any trees are cut. So I hope you'll make that change, and then I hope that process will be followed as it's implemented. And then the last thing, thank you so much for the work you've done on Chapter 32, but more importantly, because Chapter 32 doesn't really save any trees. It encourages people to save trees, but it doesn't really save any trees. Thank you for bringing this tree preservation ordinance into discussion, and I would hope, I just got out of a meeting with the EAC, they've worked on this a long time. I hope that these two bodies could come together, because it's a huge undertaking to come up with a ordinance that would actually really protect trees. I hope that you will work in conjunction with the EAC, and I hope that they will come forward as well. Thank you very much for your time and all that you do. You spend a lot of time, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
This might sound a lot like what I just said, but it's worth it here.
I'm Catalina Candelaria. I'm from 301 Northeast 42nd Street, and I'm also a member of the EAC at this time. And I also want to thank all of you all for asking for the staff to look at the overlay ordinances. We've also, on the EAC, been looking at that in parallel. And we also are on the same page of wanting to have an eventual goal of a tree protection ordinance for our town, and for a good plan, long-term plan, for conservation, subdivision, green development. And I hope you will consider asking for our staff to look into the grants to allow us to do that, to get, I know it's a lot of work, but already the comprehensive land use plan is going to be reviewed, I believe, this coming year, and hopefully, we will have public meetings that our committee will be able to participate in, under those land use plans, to help, to help plan for the actual legally enforceable property rights ordinances, which will preserve our trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Tittle, 134 Northeast 3rd Street, Oak Island. I personally am on the other side of this, as far as the trees. I want trees. I like a lot of what Rick has come up with. Just to let you know, I'm also a builder here on the island. I don't feel that builders are addressed in this situation about what we have to do to try to work around saving trees. To me, it feels like it's more, we're going to make these rules, you figure out how to build a house. And these people are spending $150,000 to $200,000 on a lot now, and we keep making rules to where it's more difficult to build, and more difficult to build. That doesn't make sense to me, when you're spending that kind of money on personal property, money you're saved, or money that you're borrowing, and you're going to have limited rights to your property, once you start making rules on these trees. There's, I heard in the last meeting, $5,000 or $500 per tree if you're short trees on a lot when you purchased the lot. Now, that doesn't make sense. If I purchase a lot with five trees, they're in the middle of the lot. Now I have to pay, what, $4,500, nine trees? And then I have to replace the trees. One of the council members had mentioned, this is not going to come back on the builders. It's going to get pushed off on the homeowners. So we're just adding that price and keep going higher. That being said, I agree with the nine trees we have right now, the ordinance. I like the point system that he has, so we conserve and do bigger trees. But it becomes more difficult as, with the, I think there was a part about 20 feet apart trees that you replant. So try to plant nine trees 20 feet apart from each other on a 6,600 square foot lot with a house. It becomes difficult to place the trees. So I just think that it needs to be looked at further. I definitely don't agree with a complete overlay district, because once that district is in place, we have the trees that are going into that district, but then any rule can be changed. So now that zoning district, they come before council and say, "Everybody has to have a rose garden," just as an example, obviously, everybody doesn't have a rose garden, but those rules could be changed for, in that one zoning district, to cover the whole lot or the whole island. Just things I think that need to be looked at, and I would like to see builders more included in some of these decisions, so that that way, everybody can hear both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
My name is Liz White. I live at 112 Southeast 34th Street. Although this is inordinate as mayor, I am also a citizen. So my first comment is to thank the Planning Board for all of its efforts in continuing to want to address Chapter 32 in preserving our treescape. I don't need to reiterate the value of what trees do for our island. And following this gentleman, as a developer, I don't believe that we're able to effectively create policy to maintain or preserve, conserve our treescape without addressing stormwater management ordinances that comport. I don't think that in modern technology, we have rather draconian measures for stormwater management, and until we find the middle ground on these two issues, we will never be effective in terms of conservation. And I don't think that they can be addressed independently. So I encourage, I'm thankful for the Planning Board's efforts, and I encourage you to work with Mr. Patterson, Matt, Mr. Kirkland, and if necessary, reach out to the state. This is not a prehistoric piece of stone that we need to carve into a wheel. This has been done. A trip to Bald Head will simply show you how this has been done very effectively. Trees are not a, I lost the word. It's not something that is wanted or an option. It's needed in order for us to maintain or sustain our community, especially one so subject to severe storms. And I do think the builders need to be part of this conversation, but I encourage you to think and reach outside of the box and use all of the resources that are available to you to propose to council ordinances for stormwater management that comport with conservation, or we will never achieve our goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Elise Snavely. I live at 72nd and Yacht, and I am here today wearing two hats. Thank you for all the work you're doing. I've been an ad hoc member of the EAC for about a year now, so I've heard a lot of talk about the UDO and a lot of the things that you have requested that we look at, and it's great that you're asking for that input. I'm a coastal ecologist. I study marshes and mangroves and intertidal habitats, and the connectivity between the trees and the marshes is huge, the stormwater, the wastewater, the nutrient runoff, the sediment even. It's necessary that we preserve the tree canopy, so thank you for this. And builders also have problems with preserving all of these trees, but we really need to focus on preserving as many and as big trees as possible. I know that you already know that. But in addition to that, I go biking all the time with my five-year-old. We're out almost every day. And going past lots that have all these nice big trees out front that shade the road versus going past all these bare, sterile lots with just grass, it's miserable to be biking past these lots that have no tree canopy, because it's, I mean, even now, we're only in May, and it bakes. I'm sure a lot of you know that as well, if you go out and walk and hike and look around the island. So if you're establishing these rules, I really ask you to consider how the private property rights of these owners balance with the public, access to even walking trails and hiking. So thank you. Thank you for all you're doing, and please keep everyone else in mind.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say one thing. I was hoping that we would also have, in the ordinance, where it says, "The plan must be approved by the stormwater and forester before any cutting can be done." Right now, it only has to be approved by Development Services, right? So that was my other request, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that true? So, is that how it's written?
It's the way the ordinance is written. Madam Chair, heard on television, sorry. We'll have, we'll have a discussion up here where everybody can hear. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come to the podium and speak?
How are you guys today?
Good morning.
I am Joyce Free Tag. I live at 330 Northeast 50th Street, and thank you so much for approving the planting of the oaks. They're looking good, the one at Veterans Park and the one in front of Dr. King's office. I'm very proud of that. And to get to the planting part for the developers, it's difficult to plant trees properly and to keep them watered so that they survive. I have seen so many places, just like in front of Publix, they put oak trees in front, and they all croaked because they were not watered or taken care of, so they were taken out. And what happens is, you go to the lot, and you say, "Yay, they put in the trees," and then a week or two later, they're gone. So it's just a waste of time and money, I'm sorry. If a developer can move a house a little bit to one side of the lot to allow a tree to grow, that would be wonderful. And also, if he could leave like a one, two, three-inch small trees around the outside, they're already established, you don't have to plant them, and they, that will ensure they survive and it'll help the stormwater runoff. That's basically what I feel right now. I'm kind of thinking both sides of the aisle here. But I love the trees on the island, and I know you all do, too. That's why you love the island, that's why you're here. So let's all work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think everybody out there has gotten up here and said something, but if anybody else wants to come to the podium and speak, who hasn't, please feel free to. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your comments. We do appreciate your taking the time and the interest to weigh in at this level. We just make recommendations, council makes the final decisions, as you know, but I think it's important to get your input at this level when we can. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question before we go into this item?
Sure.
Just for the record and for clarification, based on some of the conversation that we just heard, I'd like to ask Mr. Patterson or Mr. Kirkland to clarify, who reviews the, who reviews the plan? When is it reviewed? When does it get looked at? So can you all help us understand, understand that?
Matt? When we get to it, I'll definitely walk you guys through that, if that's okay? I can walk you through that as a part of our discussion of Chapter 32, sure.
Yeah, that'll be a part of it. At the beginning would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wes, thank you.
Everybody good? Okay, Matt, you have a presentation for us?
I do. First, before I get started on Old Business, item 1.1, thanks to everybody who reached out to me. I had a difficult time at last month, so everybody's concerns are appreciated, but I'm glad to be back and glad to be here to help y'all out. Our first agenda item for today is continuation of a discussion of Chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances. of Ordinances, speaking to the point about when and who reviews a vegetation plan when it's required. Currently, the ordinance does read that the vegetation plan needs to be reviewed by Development Services staff for compliance with the requirements and guidelines provided in Section 32-76, which is the specific requirements. Now, that's done anytime that someone applies for essentially any type of development permit on the island, whether it's to move some dirt around, whether it's to build a new house. Anytime something like that happens, a vegetation plan is required to be submitted along with that permit. Those permits are reviewed by a wide range of staff members, including building inspections, planning staff, stormwater, et cetera. So technically, Rick does look at those permits, but the planning development staff reviews the vegetation plan. Now, that being said, let's say there's a question on the vegetation plan, there's what kind of tree works best, you know, some, and people do reach out to us to ask questions about what type of trees they can use, et cetera. If they need guidance, you're right, the planning staff kicks that to Rick, he's the town forester. He has more, as you heard last month, he's a horticulturalist, so he has extensive knowledge about what type of plants can and can't work. Basically, what town staff checks on is, you know, we have, currently, we have a certain number of trees that you're supposed to retain or replant, so we check and make sure that you meet those planting and size requirements, and if there's a problem or a question about it, then we pull Rick in. Really, the, the way the ordinance is currently written, you know, the staff just, we're basically checking off a box, you know, you have X number of square foot, you're supposed to have X number of trees on your vegetation plan. Do you have that number of trees? Yes, no? So we really only pull Rick in for his expertise if that's necessary, essentially, or if there's a question or somebody needs some guidance, we pull Rick in at that point.
During the, this process, does anyone actually go to the site and visually check?
Yeah, so we do, we do site compliance to check. So if there's trees to be preserved, they're typically flagged, if you ride by a site and you see some pink trees, some pink tags on the lot, that's when we go check and make sure that what you've got on your plan is, is what's being retained on the ground. Now, if there are trees to be replanted, you know, obviously, they're not going to replant those until after whatever work is built. So then we also check at the final zoning inspection to make sure that what you have on your vegetation plan is what matches on the ground. You don't get your CO until those two, what's on the ground and what's on the plan match.
So your, your team will actually come out and do the inspection on the trees along with everything else?
Yeah, we do a site compliance check at the beginning, and we do a final zoning inspection at the end. That's correct.
Matt, Madam Chair?
Yes.
With all due respect to Dave, and I'm happy to ask questions as we go or ask questions at the end, but, you know, I would like to follow up with that and, and get real specific, you know, because it sounded like a lot of people are looking at the lot of land, but I think what we're talking about is, does, when is the plan submitted? Does somebody look at this drawing, and then somebody looks at the actual site before trees are removed, or is it after trees are removed? What's the chronology here of the qualification of the people? What, what the timing of when they look at the land, and what's their authority thereof? I mean, I can send 100 people out there, but we've got no authority to do anything, so that's fine. But, you know, what is the timing and so forth? And is, you know, is it viable? Because I hear a lot of people complaining about the amount of trees and losing the canopy, but as met, as much as we talk about planting new trees, people are concerned about conserving the existing trees. So what is being done to save trees? And somebody said to me, you know, sometimes if you move the driveway a little bit, you can save a tree on this side, and it goes on and on. But who's, who's doing that review and the timing? So do we want to ask questions now? Because that's my question, but, you know, but I think that takes a really detailed answer.
Of course, so you shouldn't, there shouldn't be any clearing or grading of a site without a development permit in hand. If someone does that, then they've violated our ordinance. So you would need to submit a development permit that includes your vegetation plan. Once that's approved, you can begin your site work. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Can we please?
They give you a hammer for a reason.
The questions will come from the board up here. Thank you very much.
So we don't have anything to look at until we have a development plan and a vegetation plan in hand. The vegetation plan is what's going to be retained or replanted. At that point, we don't go out because there's nothing for us to check until the site work's actually been done. At that point, we check and make sure that, are you retaining? And they call that in. So someone has to call in an inspection to our office. At that point, if what's not matching, if what's on the ground doesn't match what you've got on your tree and vegetation plan, then we have to figure out how we're going to get you into compliance, whether that's planting new trees or modifying the site work in some way to make sure that you're in compliance, so. But there's nothing, there's nothing for us to check when you first turn in a development plan, because what we're checking is, are you in compliance with the site work that you say you're going to do?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate, Mr. Kirkland, you explaining that.
Sure.
I got to tell you that the devil is always in the details, and we don't have time here today to go through this. But you speak with authority, but frankly, you're leaving out pieces, because you say there's nothing to check. Well, the people in the town would like to think that a plan would be submitted and would be marking the existing trees and saying, we're going to save these and we're going to rip these ones out. And then that would be, go out to the site and be validated in the first place, and then they would love, not sure if it's legal within our zoning, but they would love to have some, some expertise like a Rick Patterson, negotiate some items, like, couldn't you save this tree by moving the fence and this and that? And so for you to say that, well, there's nothing to look at until they clear, you know, we give them the permit, we clear a lot, you don't know what trees were there and what trees are gone. And I can tell you, the level of trust in this town is at an unbelievable low. I've been here nine years, and I've never seen it like this. There is very little trust. People are attacking me on the planning board as though I'm cutting down trees. So, and frankly, I think I am, because I'm not protecting them when I'm sitting behind this board here. So, you know, I don't think we can really get into the exact process and the timing and the sign-off right now, but I think it needs to be done. Thank you.
And I can speak to that. If that's the, the process you would like to put in place, you would need to amend Chapter 32 to include that process. It sounds like you're thinking about maybe a pre-application meeting with the town forester, maybe an inspection prior to. Certainly, shouldn't the planning board want to see text amendments to that effect? You know, as with anything, as long as it's under your purview, you can certainly begin work on a text amendment to that effect if that's what the board wants to work on.
If I can kind of wrap this up on this part of the discussion before we get into what's before us, and I think it is an important point that was brought up during the public comments, and that is, I too do not feel comfortable with not having more specificity in the ordinance itself as to who does what when and what the inspection piece of it is. And so I, for one, would like to see language to that effect.
Absolutely.
I agree, Madam Chair. I think we're missing a real opportunity by not looking at the lots and having some kind of interactive process before the bulldozers come in, because we could, we have to get away from the mentality of, we only have to save nine trees. Well, what if we can save 12? Well, then let's save 12.
And we can. We can do it. We can, yeah.
Madam Chair, so I, I mentioned it last month, I don't want the great to become the enemy of the good here. And the, one of the greatest techniques in, in politics is to, if you can't halt something, at least delay it and talk it to death and, and slow-roll it and so forth. I think this amendment is in shape. I would like to make a couple, when I say amendment, this amendment to Chapter 32 is in enough shape that if we can make the right amendments to it, we can pass it. The great, which is these inspection changes and so forth, I think they can be submitted later, when they get worked out, and, and, you know, to have the developers come in here, I mean, I would, I've asked you, why don't we have development input? I mean, that's the craziest thing in the world. This is not a planning board on the attack for the developers. So I believe the developers work through the planning board, and, and maybe they do, maybe they don't. I guess you, I mean, the planning director. If the planning director's eliminating or avoiding building, builders' input, that's crazy. So let's stay on point, I guess. Let's work through this. I think we should make, make, hear the rest of, of the director's input. Let's make motions whether or not we're going to approve this Chapter 32 change today, and we can improve it later. We cannot wait any longer and slow-roll this any further, I don't think.
And Bob, I, I agree with bringing back the language a separate time if we get to the point today where we can send what we have forward. I'm fine with that. And perhaps some of this discussion may help staff internally to make some adjustments in that regard, or try some, some, revise their process in the process of bringing us language that reflects that, that gets what we're talking about here. Is that fair, Matt?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's fair to say that should you and town council pass amendments to Chapter 32, we'll implement them immediately. You know, we can't just come up with internal processes outside of what the ordinance requires. So, you know, if we don't have a requirement for a pre-inspection process, we can certainly encourage it. We do it all the time with, we talked about sketch plans for new development. You know, we encourage people to come in and have those conversations prior to doing any work, but we won't be able to actually require those things to happen until the ordinance is amended as such. But to Bob's point, we can certainly bring that back. You know, that, that could be something that we can be working on pretty quickly, absolutely.
So, so Madam Chair, I'd like to take that a step further then, and request that staff bring forth a proposed text amendment.
That's right, yeah.
Regarding a pre-planned vegetation review.
Let's go through this first, and then we can make a motion to kind of capture everything you guys want to do, if that sounds okay.
Fair, thank you.
All right, great.
Yeah, there might be some other things as well.
If there's not any other discussion, as soon as Mike gets my PowerPoint pulled up, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I got a bunch of slides for y'all today. I had.
He's working with us.
I had, I told town council last time, I didn't have any slides for them last, their last meeting, so I guess I'm getting them all out on you guys this month. Let's, there we go. There we go. All right, Chapter 32 Vegetation. So just, you guys are very well aware of the background of this. The town forester had been working with the Environmental Advisory Committee to some recommendations. You guys had a discussion at the last month and asked for some clarity and organization changes. We've tried to address those as best we can and brought you back a, a new version. It essentially doesn't change any of the, meet of the recommendations of the EAC, but we did try to clarify some things. There was a couple outstanding questions, so there might be some, we'll ask you for some discussion in consideration of that at the end of this discussion. In addition, Mr. Callahan requested the board consider changing the number of trees to be saved or planted. I included his recommendations in report into this. Once again, I know that there's been some discussion on the board about moving something along and considering it later. Certainly, you guys can, can make whatever recommendation you want to town council on those, but we wanted to make sure those got in there to be considered as well. So based on some of the discussion that y'all had in the last month, there was some confusion about caliper versus diameter or breast height, so you had some feedback from the stormwater administrator that they were trying to standardize everything as DBH, so we just took all the caliper stuff out and replaced it all with DBH. So DBH would be the standard measurement there. There were some regulatory, so this is a little bit in the weeds of ordinance construction, which I'm sure we'll get into, but you typically don't want there to be regulations in how you define something. So we took those out and moved, under specimen tree specifically, there was some, like, how big it has to be to count towards this, that. You want to say what a specimen tree is, and then somewhere else say, okay, specimen trees that are this big counts towards that. So we tried to clean that up for you. We clarified that the town forester and their role in both Article 2 and 3. For clarification, that's a staff member that's appointed by the town manager, that is just how council manager, or council manager government works. Town manager tells people what to do. If there's no one there to do that, then the town manager's responsible for doing it, so. There was some question about horticultural and arboricultural standards. We maintained those arboricultural standards and included a reference to horticulture as well, so should cover both. This was a big one. We took all the tables, you know, we had a bunch of tables scattered all over the place. We moved all the tables to one appendix, one place, and then referenced them back in the ordinance. So when you go to see, okay, what kind of trees can I use? It says, hey, go to this table down here. We don't have to have a bunch of tables. We don't have to have them scattered all over. Put them in one place and just reference back to them to clean that up a little bit as well. We tried to clarify Article 2 and 3 and their relationship to public and private property as well. I know you guys had some discussion about that. Also had some discussion about the dwarf palmetto tree, and we wanted to clarify, I think there was some discussion about making sure that that was only appropriate in the first or second row, so we add a little asterisk to the table for that. And then finally, there was some discussion about what constitutes a material increase to impervious surface. So instead of having, you know, that's one of those phrases that'll get you in trouble because there's, you know, discretion about what's material, what's not. Is it 50? Is it 200? Who knows? So just clarify any increase in impervious surface. There's no subjectivity to that, it's just if it's there, it needs to be addressed appropriately. There were some remaining questions out there. The EAC had recommended the creation of a tree preservation funding scheme that would, if you preserve trees, you would not have to do it. You still have to have the same number of trees, but you wouldn't have to pay into the tree preservation fund. The way the EAC had recommended this fund work is, if you couldn't preserve any trees, you would still have to replant the number, but you'd also have to pay into the tree preservation fund, which would then be used to plant trees on public property, as these types of funds usually are. A lot of places have like a fee in lieu of tree planting. I think we've talked about that a couple of times, where you pay into a fund, the town uses that fund to plant trees on public property. So in the way the EAC recommended it, you would still end up with the same number of trees on the lot, but if you weren't preserving trees, you'd also have to, to pay into this fund that the town would then use to plant new trees. I think there was some pretty heated discussion about that, so we wanted some guidance on that. Should the planning board recommend something different from the EAC, we'll have to take both to town council and say, hey, here's what the EAC recommended, here's what it would do, here's what the planning board recommended, here's what it would do. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that as well.
Hey, Wes, excuse me. So from a best practice.
Matt, that's okay. Call me Wes, that's okay. We're just planters, we're all faceless.
They're interchangeable.
Tree preservation fund, what is the best practice? Like how, what are its benefits if we consider this type of thing? What, what, what do towns find is a benefit for that? So we understand fully.
And I, I think, and Rick might could speak to this a little bit more because he was involved with the EAC discussions, but I think the idea there is that, as you've heard some discussion today, a preserved tree is more valuable than a newly planted tree. So that hopefully, the idea would be that this would preserve and incentivize people to preserve those trees, because those are potentially more valuable than a newly planted tree. And the flip of that is, if you don't, if you have to replant trees, and you say you can't, say they're all in the middle of the lot, we got to build a house here, and just, there's no way to build a house and keep it, that not only would you have to replant, so we would get some new tree stock, but also the funding that you have would go to plant additional new trees on public property. So we'd essentially be, while we would lose the value of the reserved tree, of the preserved tree, we'd be getting more trees planted in total, because we'd have the planted trees on the lot and planted trees on public property.
But so my point is, it really doesn't preserve trees.
It doesn't.
It encourages replanting of new trees.
Yeah.
From a public property perspective.
That's right, and it's kind of the, you know, we've talked a couple of times about like the carrot and the stick, you know, how much do you, you know, we want to, well, the way this is set up, it tries to incentivize you. the way this is set up, it tries to incentivize you to preserve trees by not having to pay into that fund. I, I think that's, hopefully I'm describing that correctly. You know, best practices, there's places that do a total tree fee in lieu that, you know, you don't have to keep any trees on your lot, but you're gonna pay the town, and we're gonna go plant trees somewhere else, public property, whether that's parks, streets, et cetera. We talked about, you know, we've had some discussion about street trees here. You know, we amended the ordinance to require some trees closer to the street, be replanted or preserved. You know, that public property discussion about where trees are planted, you know, certainly a, a good discussion when you have like heat island effects. We're talking about walking on a hot street and that kind of thing.
So, for, for the public, it's not intended to be a revenue generator for the town. It's actually to help preserve and enhance the tree canopy overall from, in the public interest.
Yeah.
Just for the public's edification.
And in a in lieu setup like this, those funds are usually held in escrow only to be spent on one specific purpose. That doesn't go into a general fund. You know, it, it only goes into a specific account that's held for the replanting of those trees on public property.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Clarification.
Sure.
We talked about, say, someone bought a lot that doesn't have the number of trees currently on it or void, builds a house, they would have to pay the fee and plant the trees, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. You know, it's something that they, you guys could clarify in your recommendation as to whether that's what you want to do. The current ordinance does require you to restock a unvegetated lot, whether you want to create an exception to the tree preservation fund because, hey, you didn't have any trees. You're not removing any existing trees because there's already not any trees there. That's something that, that you guys could get into with your discussion and recommendation as well. You know, it's, it's a balancing act, and it's certainly something to consider.
Yeah. Matt, to bring this around, I think it's at what David is, is talking about, because you could certainly read the language here.
Mm-hmm.
And say that the lot is devoid of the minimum tree amount because they've clear cut.
Right.
Or you could say it's devoid of the minimum trees because there weren't any trees on it before they got a building permit.
Yeah.
And so, I, I think that's an important distinction.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. The way it's written right now, you're right. I, I think the reading of it would be if you had to plant trees.
The way it reads right now, it would, it would seem to apply to both.
Yeah, that's right.
That makes, yeah.
And if, if the planning board recommended to amend that, that'd be a simple amendment we could make to that subsection I, you know, add an exception sentence in there or something like that.
So, one more clarification.
Absolutely.
Bouncing off Madam Chair, so if the committee goes out, they look at the lot, and you can tell it's clear cut, that would be one situation. But if you go out and it's got natural gus brush and shrubs, no trees.
Yeah.
Then you could do a variance exception for that lot, correct?
I mean, if you did a, a variance would be something, you could write an exception into the ordinance, right? This board could recommend, hey, we want to make sure that there's an exception in here for lots that are not clear cut but already devoid of trees, like you're talking about where there's, you know, shrubs essentially. I mean, yes, you could write, you could recommend that change in the ordinance. That goes back to, you know, you guys talked about the, the value of a, you know, pre-application meeting and, and inspection. You know, if you had something like that in place, you'd almost have to have one because somebody come in and say, well, my lot doesn't have any trees. Well, it does not have any trees because you took them out a year ago, under the cover of, you know, the cover of the weekend, and nobody called in to tell us, and now it's just, it looks like you got a, you know, just grass lot. And it was, you know, when did that happen? Absolutely.
Yeah, it seems like there are places that are clear cut in anticipation of tree ordinance changes just about every time we do this.
That's true, too.
Plain and simple. Okay, so we'll, we'll get more specific on that. This is just a general discussion on this particular piece, since you brought that up. If you would continue, please, sir.
Absolutely. There'd been some discussion of a tree preservation overlay district. Madam Chair brought that back up as a separate agenda item for some additional discussion. We talked about that a couple of months ago, too. But I just wanted to, you know, bring that back up, that, you know, this is all under the context of, of another mechanism that's being worked through currently. And then if you guys wanted to have any discussion about Mr. Callahan's proposals regarding the number of trees to be replanted or saved on a lot, those are kind of the three things that, discussion-wise, I thought were still hanging out, out there. You know, staff recommendation is, you know, to recommend town council approve. You know, there's consistent with the comprehensive plan, some of the specific goals of the comprehensive plan. Also, we've talked about a few times the, the public interest of preserving trees here on the island. So, I'd be happy to, if I have any additional questions you might have, or you guys can have discussion however you want to handle this. I know we've looked at it a few times now, so.
First of all, I'd like to ask if there are any more specific questions about something you might not understand in what's proposed here, if questions you might have, Matt. Tim, you got anything? Bob?
One, one quick one. I hope it's a quick one. Mr., Mr. Director, do you, do you feel like, you know, you're not adequately involving the building community and discussions with builders and input from builders? Or is it, I mean, obviously, they have a public forum, and anybody can come here, and plenty of citizens do. Do you, I mean, are you ignoring the planning department? Are you ignoring the building community?
Um, that's a great question. As you just mentioned, we have, the EAC is a public meeting. They have public discussions every month, and as far as I know, they've been working on this for, for some time now. You know, we're having this discussion now. These, the agendas for the planning board are published well in advance of the meeting. I would recommend any interested citizen, whether it be a builder, or homeowner, or property owner, or business owner, you know, keep tabs on that. In addition, as the chair mentioned, this is an advisory board, and any change like this would go to town council. And for chapter 32, we actually hold public hearings that are advertised as well. So, there's lots of opportunity for public input. Certainly, if the board or town council wanted to seek out direct stakeholder input as a part of any effort, you know, we could certainly consider that as well.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Madam Chair.
Natasha.
With that, Bob, my husband and I own a building company here on Oak Island, and personally, we haven't had any problems with the staff. With any time John goes into the inspection department and asks for help, they're always helpful. And Rick has even come out to the job sites to check for stormwater requirements and to try to help us preserve more trees and everything. So personally, I can say, you know, we haven't, we haven't had any issues.
Glad to hear it.
With that, so.
Yeah. Do you have any questions about?
Oh, sorry, Derek.
That's fine.
Well, yeah, sorry about that. Personally, I would like to go through the document kind of line by line, like we normally do with, with other things. No, I don't have any questions right now, but just until we get to the items.
Okay.
Chair?
I don't have anything. I have some questions within the document that we'll get to.
Same for me, once we get into it.
All right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Matt. If you want to rest your, rest your feet there, and I'm sure we probably will still be asking questions as we go through this. I do want us to, as Natasha said, as our normal practice, actually go through page by page, and any questions or suggestions for modifications that anybody has, I'd like to, to do that. And so, and I will ask other board members for their input first and save mine for last, if I have any. And so, I'll start, David, with you on page 15. Do you have anything on page 15? It's what's on page 15 in our planning for packets?
Page 15 is good.
Karen?
Good.
Karen?
Good.
Well, I do wish that we could actually do the professional thing and have the caliper as a measurement of nursery stock, particularly since we're dealing with replanting in many cases. And the diameter breast, at breast height is the standard for measuring existing trees. But at least if we could insert existing before the word, trees for DBH. And there are other, you know, there's, there are certainly definitions for caliper that describe how nursery stock is measured. But perhaps with the other, some of the other arboriculture standards that are referenced in here, and with another addition to that, perhaps we can just leave it at that. Nursery stock is measured differently. Okay, on page 16. Tim? Bob? Natasha?
Um, no, I don't see any issues with the changes on that page.
Chair?
Um, I do have a question about a potential definition, and that is something that we would qualify as a grand or heritage tree. We describe large tree, but we have some trees on this island that should be preserved at all cost, and I think we should define...
Yeah, that's beyond the specimentary.
Beyond the specimentarys. I think we should define what, what those are.
And that may be one thing that's included in the overlay district. But, but I agree that, and we don't, my hope is that in the, ultimately in the overlay district, that that's where we would be defining what that heritage tree is for us. That would be a larger, much larger DBH than, than anything that we're discussing here.
And Madam Chair, I would support the same additional definition for grand or heritage trees. We have a town forester who could certainly help us with that specific definition, but we have some beautiful trees we should preserve.
Either of you have any other questions on 16? David, you good on 16? Um, Matt, in that definition of large tree and small tree, isn't that second sentence in both of those, the way that it's worded looks to me like a requirement rather than a definition? Is there some way that we can, because of the fact that we took out, if we're striking the definition of a tree, which is, gets at the, the DBH minimum, perhaps we could, perhaps we need to put back in the tree definition and say, any woody perennial plant, excluding palm trees, with a minimum of, you know, DBH of two inches.
Yeah.
And then strike out that last sentence in both the large tree and the small tree.
Yeah, that's, that's a great catch. I'm sorry, I thought I had removed that from these definitions, because as I mentioned in our discussion, the, that's really more of a regulatory thing as to what size of tree counts towards planting requirements. Really, I wouldn't even set the DBH in there. I would just take out the second sentence because the, the DBH it has to be to count is in the regulatory section already. So, really, you could, really, this is just kind of a general description of what is a small tree. Hey, it's a woody perennial plant, typically having a single stem, growing over 30 feet in height and maturity, excluding palm trees.
Okay.
Same thing for small.
So, you could strike that last sentence on the large tree, and strike it on the last sentence on the small tree definition because all those regulations related to DBH or elsewhere in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's a regulatory statement that's covered elsewhere in the ordinance. You don't need it in the definition.
All right. The other thing, the other thing, and I know we had previously hardwood and, and under our specimentary definition, we had hardwood and conifers. The hardwood and softwood makes me think we're just cutting trees to go to a furniture factory. Typically, in most tree preservation ordinance that I've looked at elsewhere, and certainly in the, much of what is, much of what is discussed in some of the Tree City USA publications, they use the terms evergreen or deciduous. And there's hardwoods, softwoods that fall into both of those categories. But I think I would like to see, while we're at this, use existing evergreen or deciduous trees.
I mean, I defer to the town forester on his expertise in trees in that regard.
Because that means...
Whether that makes a difference.
What, what would be a problem with changing hardwood and softwood to evergreen or deciduous?
I think it's more defined as hardwood and softwood, and I think that's more understandable for most builders and most people reading that. I don't think there's really any difference in definition, really.
Yeah, there's, there's not. Okay, thank you. Okay. Page 17. Hello, David? Karen?
For me also, Madam Chair.
Karen?
Karen.
I'm gonna have to put you all on separate sides. Natasha?
Um, I'm not sure if this will be appropriate or not, but under the change, section 32-36, trees planted on municipal property, would it be appropriate to say trees planted on municipal and private property, or would that be needed?
There's, there's another place for private property.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Anything else on page 17?
No.
Bob?
No.
Karen? On the top, at the top of the page, on what would be section 32-33, two, at the top of page 17, we have the standards for tree care operations. There are also standards Z 60.1 for nursery stock, and there's Z 133 for safety. I think both of those may have been in previous ordinances we have, had in the past. And also like to include, not only are they, actually, the nursery stock standards are the ones that are developed by the American Society of Horticulture Science, and the other two standards are developed by the International Society of Arbiculture. But I would like to, at a minimum, include the, after the A300 standards for tree care operations, include, and Z 60.1 for nursery stock?
Can you repeat that, Karen?
Z, it's Z 60.1 for nursery stock. I know a lot of people, I've heard comments over the years about, you know, the quality of the... of the replanting stock that's there. And at least we should be using, considering standards for that, particularly if there's an intent to give more credits for some of those plantings, that they be according to some industry standard.
Okay.
Page eighteen. Tim? Bob?
No.
Natasha?
Yes, give me just a second here. Okay, section thirty-two, thirty-nine, community awareness. I said, do we have a dedicated position for town forester? Rick is our town forester, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If so, in the absence of the town forester, who's in charge? And are we identifying that person? Oh, I see. Or its designated successor? No, no, that would be an environmental advisory.
The AAC, yeah, right.
And it says, and the town forester. But if Rick is not available, who would that go to? The, the building inspector or?
It would go to whoever, town manager designates.
Okay.
And that's the same for any job in the town.
Right.
If I'm not around, the town manager can designate somebody else to do my job.
I just didn't want development services looking around, you know, saying, who do we go to if, if Rick's not here, so.
Same brain.
And section thirty-two dash forty A, the public's work department shall be responsible for the maintenance of trees on municipal property. Should this read, under the direction of the town forester, the public works department shall be responsible for the maintenance of trees on municipal property? Because who, do we need to correctly define who they're answering to?
So the, the town forester is identified in the ordinance as being responsible for this ordinance. Public Works is generally responsible for the maintenance of all municipal properties. So, I mean, they're the correct person to actually do the maintenance, but I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, and the reason I'm mentioning that is because, you know, I know we have guys out there working, cutting grass and, and whatnot, who may not necessarily be qualified to properly prune the trees and, and all. And I just want to make sure, you know, we're not out willy-nilly cutting trees without really knowing what we're supposed to do with them.
Don't they get trained on that?
I can't speak to the public works department in operations, unfortunately.
Well, and, and there are, in other words, this gets back to, and one of the duties of, under thirty-two, thirty-three, starting back at the bottom of page sixteen, town forester's duties, it's talking about supervising the planning, maintenance, removal as necessary trees on public property, and coordination with affected town departments. And so, to me, that puts that responsibility, even though the public works department might be actually doing the hands-on work, it's the town forester's responsibility to see that that's carried out according to those standards.
Yeah, and then, under subsection F of thirty-two dash forty, it actually talks about the, the maintenance, public trees has to meet arboricultural standards described in some of those operations. I mean, that would be under the purview of the town forester, certainly, so.
So I think, although a lot of times, things like that are delineated separately like that, and you think, well, it's not saying it in that sentence, but it's in that section.
But it's somewhere else.
And so, if you take it all piece-
Right.
Yeah.
The, what you need is, is there, and it's actually a, a better way of, of doing that.
Describing it.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Everything's there, I understand.
Basically, so like, they don't tell me and Brady to go out and cut trees, because we're not part of the public works department, and, you know, we don't necessarily interface with Rick in that way. So like, we don't have the police department and the fire department going out there-
Right.
-pruning a bunch of home trees.
Rick is here now, so things have probably changed, but the reason I'm mentioning this is because I have seen, and I'm not sure that they were town employees, going along the street sides with a blade and just cutting. So I just want to make sure that we're, that's not happening.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're protect, we're protected under this document, that's all.
Well, and, I've seen something, I think, I think you and I have seen the same thing back in the day. And of course, DOT has their own standards. They're the ones that are responsible for, like, the corridors of trees that we do have on Oak Island Drive, for example. Okay. So is everybody good with that? Okay, but still, going down the road.
Yeah, I'm having a finger on page eight.
I'm good.
David?
All right. Okay. Page nineteen, at least in terms of the amendments themselves, just cleans up that language about the forester, whoever, does all those things with the hazardous tree section. But is there anything else on that page that maybe not identified? Does she have anything to say about? David?
Yes.
Carrie? Erin? Carrie?
I have something.
Natasha? Go for it.
All right. Section thirty-two, forty dot three A, it says, oh, God. We'll just start here. Within twenty-five feet of public, wait a minute, excuse me. No person or business shall perform any grading, excavation, place any fill, compact the soil, or construct any building structure, street, sidewalk, driveway, pavement, or public utility within twenty-five feet of any public tree without first notifying and consulting with the development services staff. Should that say town forester?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with you.
All right.
I mean-
Good catch.
Rick, you're gonna be getting some calls.
It sounds like there's a consensus among the board to replace any reference to development services staff with probably the town forester or their designate or something like that, maybe.
No, I don't, I think that's probably a reach. It should be developments services and the town forester. Whatever role that the development staff has, they need to, they need to continue that. But you're looking for a further protection by an expert.
Yeah.
Right. So I think what you're recommending there is to substitute, I mean, to add-
I wouldn't strike that add.
And town forester.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the same thing for the next B, I would imagine, Natasha.
Yeah, I actually didn't catch that, but-
We work together. Okay. Point of order or information, Madam Chair. So are we making amendments as we go and-
We're, we are.
-Madam Clerk collecting these, or?
Yeah, the things, and, and I'm, I'm writing down things. In other words, what I wanted to do when we get through with this, that everybody seems to agree on, is to go back through and say, okay, we said this, this, this-
Review every one of them.
Just make sure that we've got them.
Okay.
All right.
Because the motion would be dependent on those amendments.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Bob, nineteen, page nineteen?
Good.
Thank you, Natasha.
You're welcome.
Okay, page twenty. Tim?
I'm good.
Bob?
Nothing, thank you.
Natasha? And I would again ask that the diameter at breast height, it'd be specified that DBH is the standard for measuring existing trees? Just to keep it consistent with the definition on page fifteen.
Carrie? I suspect that my colleague and I will have the same comment about the definitions in terms of defining a grand or heritage tree in this section as well.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
Yeah, and so, I mean, so far, the, the heritage tree, it may come back separately or be incorporated into the overlay zoning district, and I think we've already asked for the permitting process that they come back as a separate, some separate language. Okay. All right. Page twenty-one. David?
I think I'm good on this.
Carrie? As we mentioned later, I'd like to make sure we add the request for the text amendment on sort of a pre-planned vegetation review with suggestions from the forester on possible ways for tree preservation. So when we get to that, that would be my only thing on this page.
Well, and, and since-
Under thirty-two seventy-four at some point.
Down at the bottom, right. Okay.
My comment is the same on that.
Natasha?
I realize this is just a definition, but under vegetation plan, alteration of an existing drainage system, issuance of a grading or development permit, don't you have, wouldn't you have to have a development permit prior to grading? Would, would you be allowed to apply for a grading permit on an empty lot? And would there be a reason for that? It just, I, I know this is just a definition, but I'm not really sure, when, when we say grading permit, what really is that? I know when we finish building a house, we grade, you know, make sure everything is level, but when we say grading-
So it's really kind of semantics. A development permit is essentially like a zoning permit, where you're actually gonna, you're ready to build the house, you have a house plan, you, you do everything.
Right.
A grading permit would be if you're merely going to grade the lot, and you're not ready to, you don't have a house plan yet, and you're not ready to do any of the actual construction on the property, so.
So, pers-
A grading permit can be wrapped into the development permit. You can do it all at once, or if you're just gonna do site work, you can go ahead with the, with the grading permit.
Okay. And, and this may be, you know, handled somewhere else in the document, but I'm not sure why someone would be given permission to grade a lot without building on it, without having a development plan in place. So would they be able to come in and cut the trees down, plant back the required minimum, grade? You know what I'm saying? It seems like, and, and I may be reading this wrong, but I'm just trying to determine why it says grading or development permit.
And that's a separate discussion from this, because that gets into requirements of building permits, state building code requirements, UDA requirements.
Just as long as we handle it, you know, somewhere else.
But yes, I mean, you can get a, a permit to do site work on a site without necessarily having a, a building in mind, and that's permitted, as far as I'm aware, under state building codes.
Okay.
Anything else, Natasha?
I'm good.
Bob?
Well, and thank you, Natasha, for bringing that up, because, you know, later, we're gonna talk about thirty-two seventy-five, which, we're talking about inserting in the plan review of the town foresters. So I don't think we need to say in here, or maybe we do need to say that it should be reviewed by the town forester in here, it should be submitted to, because what you just read about the vegetation plan on page twenty-one, said a plan submitted to the development services department staff in conjunction with subdivision of land and blah, 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 blah. So later, we're gonna say the plan is reviewed by town forester, at least I think we are. So, Madam Chair, do you think we should put it in here as well, under definition, or just put it under the plan review section?
I think this gives the place to submit it. I don't think we need to have two different places to submit it. And typically, that town forester is going to be part of the development services staff. So this is just a submission for permit.
Yeah, initially, they, they submit it to-
Development services plan.
Development services.
Okay, so I have nothing on this, nothing on this page, thank you.
Okay. Tim? Okay, I have one, and that is if we've defined large tree and small tree for our public property, it seems to me like, and we have the specimen tree that's carried over, but we did not also, and we defined DBH, but we did not also include the large tree definition and the small tree definition in this list of definitions for private property. And so, just seems to me like, if nothing else, to be consistent, we probably need to do that. So, let's see, large tree would go before natural area, and that would be the large tree definition as we've amended it to strike that last sentence. And then, small tree would go before specimen tree, like it does in the other section. And the, this may be the way it is now, the other thing, this is just a technical kind of thing, and tree value, council of tree and landscape appraisers, looks like that should be capitalized to give them appropriate, capital, to use the appropriate capitalization. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
You got a typo under shrub, too. It says typically smaller than a tree with, it should be multiple, it's got multiply. Why it should be an E?
Nice work, Tim.
Good job.
Wait, where's that?
Under shrub, about a third of the way down the page.
It says multiply.
It says multiple, multiply stems, should be multiple stems.
One of the stems to multiply, Tim.
And there's something to that, too.
That's right.
There's something, and it gave you a Y.
Okay. All right. Anything else on twenty-one? Okay. Tim? Bob?
Yes.
This is where the-
So I will take up the request from the, the audience, the speaker that suggested that in thirty-two seventy-five, under A, it should be reviewed by development services staff, and, and let's insert, and the town forester. Also, under thirty-two seventy-six, is there any further discussion on adding the town forester there? Okay. Under thirty-two seventy-
That's consistent on what we've done before, yeah.
Those of you who have the packets as members of the board here, I submitted changes to thirty-two seventy-six. I've submitted proposed changes for A, C, D, and E. And you have those in, on page twenty-eight in your packet. And so I'm making, I'd like to, at some point, make a motion that we approve those, whether we're just capturing it here now. And it, it basically increases the required number of trees by about thirty-three percent.
Bob, if it's okay with you, I think that warrants a separate discussion at the end, if we can go through these and then come back and with those tree requirements.
At the end of today? At the, today?
Right, just today.
Just at the end of this document.
At the end of the document.
Yeah.
Sorry, the end of the document, yeah, sure. Let's, that's fine. Let's carry on with the page.
All right, thank you. Anything on twenty-two? Anything else?
No, I'm sorry, let's see. No, not right now.
Carrie?
No, nothing on this page.
Carrie?
Yes, Madam Chair, like Bob, I'll have a recommended amendment to thirty-two seventy-four C four, which we can talk about more, might, might generate some fun discussion when we get there.
Carrie, can you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, it's on, page twenty-two, Natasha, thirty-two seventy-four, C, item four.
About the locational trees?
Oh, okay, I see. Okay.
So what do you wanna? What do you want to?
I have new text I'd like to pass around when we get to the, it might require some further discussion.
So after Bob does his?
Yes, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Sure. David?
I'm good right now, but we may bring up some later.
Okay. All right. Page 23. David?
So we're redlining all the current DBH and credits, and we're going to increase the credits for certain width of trees, correct, for the new document?
Well, so what is, the table that is existing that's exed out?
We're exiting it out.
That table, and that was created for planted, newly planted trees only. And one of the reasons for having, because the credits, you know, started at the lower end, you know, started one and going up, one of the reasons for the credits for newly planted live oaks getting double credit was to try to incentivize planting larger live oak trees. I'll just say that as a matter of where that came from. But yeah, this is where, in the appendix, existing trees are as proposed on page 26 in Table 2 at the top, and credit for planted, newly planted trees, based on Table 3, also on page 26. So that's what G, what G would do, and then you have the sub-points underneath that, but what G would do is replace that table not only with the new tree, redo the new tree credits, which would be giving more credits for smaller planted trees than what's currently allowed. And would have the existing trees based on a new table that we don't have in terms of a tree is a tree, it's a tree existing.
It's just the DBH.
And so the number of credits would go by DBH. That's what's proposed.
Okay.
Anything?
Carrie? It's okay. Item C, I'm just wondering if maybe a clarification might be in order. Oceanfront and second row properties are excluded from the above requirements. Seems pretty, taking a hard stance, when in actuality, what's being done is a modification of what they need to do. So it just seems that if that sentence said, "Properties are modified from the above requirements," then it goes on to explain what those modifications are. It seems more logical to me.
Well, it's a wordsmithing kind of thing. I mean, it could be exempted, it could be excluded, it could be, exempted is usually more, it's more the word of choice for ordinance writing, is it not, Matt?
I mean, like you said, it's a grammatical thing. Basically, the intent of the statement is to say that oceanfront and second row properties fall under different requirements than what's proceeding.
Which is a modification, not an exclusion.
But they're excluded from the above require, or if you want to say, from the requirements in-
Section B.
Section 32-71B, and it may be better to specify, instead of above, actually state the-
That seems-
State the reference.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, I can live with that.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Carrie?
I don't have anything on this page.
Natasha?
No, except, the way I'm understanding, E, a standard size lot is around 6,600 square feet. Most of them are 5,500 by 120. I know some are oversized, but I'm coming up with about an average of nine trees. Okay, just want to be sure I'm correct on that.
Which is the same as what's required, E, or any of the other places, right now.
Right now, yeah.
As proposed. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Bob?
So I have an amendment I would like to make to, on page 23, G number 1. So I'll wait till after that. And what I'd like to recommend is that we review these, let's call them housekeeping kind of things, and approve them, and then we'll get into amendments, so we can work through the amendments, you know, vote on them and move on, because this is the third reading that I've gone through for this. So I'll wait on my G number 1 amendment and move on to page 24, if Tim is okay with that.
You want to share what your amendment might look like, or?
Well, we're gonna talk about it at the end, so let's not, in the interest of time, we're gonna be into two hours here shortly.
Tim? I have issues with G 1. I think it incentivized cutting trees and planting three small live oaks and being done with it. Maybe that's all fine, well and good, but if we're trying to preserve existing trees, it's not. So I'll just say that.
Maybe we share the same amendment, Madam Chair, but I think-
I would eliminate it altogether, but, and the second thing I would say is, in number 4, G 4, says where vegetation is being replaced or preserved, so that is expressly the existing trees. So they shall select plant types from this very limited list. There are a lot of existing trees out there that aren't on this list, and that gives people, oh, well, that tree isn't on the list, I'm gonna cut it.
That's not, I don't think that's correct.
Well, that's exactly what it's, that's exactly what it says, as it's worded right now. And that's a hard no with me. A very hard no.
Madam Chair, could we just take the select plant types off, mark it out, leave current vegetation over to DBH?
Just says, in other words, we're talking about vegetation being replaced. And if they want to replace it, and we want to say they only select plant types from that list for the replacement trees, I think it's overly limited list, but, okay, fine. What I'm saying is that that list shouldn't ever be construed to apply to existing trees. And so my request is to just strike or preserve. Where vegetation is being replaced, applicants shall select plant types from this list of trees in Table A, period.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so we're not doing amendments, really. We're doing cleanup, so I think, unless you're looking for a vote, I mean-
That's, that will come through the list of-
That will be your amendment, and you'll have my vote, but let's be consistent with holding amendments and move through the cleanup, is my recommendation, Madam Chair.
The other thing, I know we had a lot of discussion, Bob, you and Natasha should remember this, about oceanfront and second row, and about excluding, about not excluding second row.
I apologize, are you talking about C, Madam Chair?
I'm talking about C, yes.
And what is the question?
Just a comment, that we had a discussion about, in other words, it was oceanfront and second row before we went through the six-month process that we went through two years ago, and we decided to add second front to it, or take second front out, now it's being added back. I just make that as an observation.
I have no issue, Madam Chair.
So, page 24. Tim?
Wait, can I say one thing regarding that? Section C? Some of that may be taken care of in the overlay district if we decide to implement that.
Let's hope.
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah, because basically, what you're doing is saying that capes, what's there is done for.
I know, we don't want that.
No.
I don't.
I don't either, but here we go.
So we need to fix it. Do you see a problem there?
I mean, that's, it's there, everybody, I mean, that's, you know, I'm just pointing out, we took it out before, it's back in here now. We had reasons for taking it out before. Are those reasons still valid? If we can address what we're concerned about in the overlay district, that's fine, but that will be sometime down the road.
Right, and that will take time, but this we can handle now, right? Can you make a recommendation on what, how this should be rewritten?
Well, in other words, it's being rewritten. Is everybody comfortable with putting second row properties back in to the exclusion?
No.
That's my question. David?
They take second row out. There, what's the difference in second and third row? It should be front row only if we're gonna do anything, and then we should have a list of plants for front row, just like we do everybody else.
Yeah, that's certainly the conclusion we came to.
Yeah.
Carrie?
In agreement about the second row comment.
Carrie?
Natasha? I agree.
Bob?
In spite of making amendments here at will, because the chair would like to do it, I guess it's still okay, and I'll expect the same courtesy, and I agree.
So we will-
Mr. Pittman?
Yeah, Bob.
Mr. Pittman?
I agree.
Okay. And, and Mr. Callahan, I would just say that the amendments that you proposed at the end of this, this is amendments to amendments that are there before us, and that's the distinction that I'm making.
Madam Chair, I just want to move on, so please, carry on.
Great. Okay. Page 24. David? Carrie?
I think I have some text changes related to what I mentioned earlier that may assist with H, but we'll, we can talk about that when I provide this text language.
Carrie?
I have some concerns about H. I'm willing to wait and see what my colleague recommends, but I have some real concerns about how that's worded.
Natasha?
Yeah, the same with the fees. I'm not sure I completely understand that. To me, it looks like people are being charged regardless. I mean, if they put back the required amount of trees, the way I'm reading this, they still have to pay a fee. I don't think that's fair. But then, if people think we need to have that, then should we incentivize homeowners, developers, if they exceed the requirements, plant one more tree than required, then the fees are waived? Just one way of looking at that.
I think there's a lot of confusion about that.
Yeah, I think so, too. And I'm not, we don't have an attorney here, but I'm not sure it's legal to do that. I don't know. And I do have one more thing. Section 3277, no clearing without permit. No clearing or removal of vegetation other than bush hogging shall be permitted on any undeveloped lot. Personally, should we be permitted to bush hog for no reason? I mean, just go in and take out the underbrush that, I think it's important. And then, under the section where it says, "The following activities are exempt from this section," list a few things, hobby farms such as vegetable flower gardens, gardening or landscape maintenance, could that be a potential loophole for someone to come in and clearcut their lot? If they just said, oh, well, I'm gonna plant a garden here, and that's primarily what the lot's gonna be used for, we're not developing it as far as building a structure, but I just, I want to clearcut it and plant a garden. Am I reading this correctly?
Matt?
Yeah, we've never run into that situation before where somebody's wanting to clearcut a lot just to build a garden, so I can't really speak from history or experience on that. However, in order to build on a lot that's devoid of trees, you would still have to plant those trees back. So even if somebody, if somebody did clearcut a piece of property and say, hey, I'm gonna put a garden here, they plant a garden, then six months later, they say, I want to build a house here. Well, you don't have any trees on that property, you now have to go plant the trees back to the rate that it's supposed to be before you can build that house.
And I understand, you know, the building part, but just say someone owns a lot, and they're watching, and the rumor mills are spreading around, oh, the town of Oak Island, they're becoming more strict with their tree ordinances. I think I'm going to go in and clearcut the lot that I own and call it a garden and move on, so I don't have to adhere to some of that, possibly. I'm kind of speaking, many, many years ago, Bullin Springs, there's a protected woodpecker, and I'm sure some of you are familiar with that. When the boards started talking about, you know, protecting the woodpecker, or the state came in, people started clearcutting their lots just so they could avoid that issue. And I'm not sure that this, is this a loophole in here?
So, Madam Chair, and Natasha, my thought on this is, you could very well be 100% right. However, I don't, after we get done with the next two pages, you can, you know, make an amendment, and feel free to offer an amendment, you know, write it down, and let's make an amendment.
And I personally, yeah. I don't necessarily have an amendment, but I'm just, I just want to bring it to attention, and possibly, maybe that's something the staff needs to look at.
I'm not sure that this would be classified as a loophole, it's just a straight-up exemption. So loophole is like, I'm trying to, you know, bend the rule in some way, this is just flat out.
Well, I'm not saying anybody's intentionally doing that, but people on the outside may be looking for a way to get around things, and-
Well, and it seems to me, from a legal standpoint, I know that bona fide forestry and agricultural practices is something that we can't prevent.
Right.
And there were hobby farms, lines, and then minor clearing of vegetation, lines that surveying, certainly have to be able to do surveying.
Sure.
And minor clearing, cutting grasses, weeds, vines, but I think that what you seem to be identifying as the concerning part that could be abused would be from hobby farms through landscape maintenance.
Right.
And you could just strike that as a potential amendment, we'll come back, go through that later.
Okay, all right.
Do you have anything else on that page? Natasha?
I did have something else. Okay, so enforcement penalties, section 3279. Is this saying that they could clearcut and only pay a $500 fine for doing so?
If they did it without a permit. Now, they could clearcut with a permit.
If they did it without a permit, they could clearcut-
If you clearcut a piece of property without a permit, you could be, according to this, if you do it in violation of the requirements of the article, you do have to pay a $500 fine. In addition, you have to come into compliance with the ordinance, so you can't just pay $500 and get out of complying with the ordinance. I think that's a misconception. and get out of complying with the ordinance, I think that's a misconception that often if you are fined, you're in some way not required to still come into compliance with the ordinance. To the contrary, you have to pay your fine and do what the ordinance says you have to do, um...
Okay.
Is the fine amount established by the general statute, is the five hundred dollar, is that a limit established by the state?
As permitted by the GS fourteen-four, I think it is.
Is, is that the maximum amount?
Yes, and, uh, civil penalties, um, you know, there, there's some balance there, you can't, uh, charge arbitrarily high civil penalty. So, if you have, say you have a bunch of civil penalties in your code, and they're all five hundred dollars, you can't just decide to make one ten thousand dollars just to be punitive, it has to be, uh, the, the nature of civil penalties is that they need to be consistent across the board. I think five hundred is probably the highest one we have right now, I couldn't say that for sure, but...
You sound like what I remember, uh, our town attorney saying the last time a council member wanted to make this ten thousand dollars, which was not that many years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
This is not a change, is it?
No, it's the same.
That's what's in there right now, that's right, yes, sir.
That's what I was looking for, it's, it's not a change to our...
I, I just want to be clear that I understand it, and the board understands it. I- in a real world application, can someone come in and clear cut their lot? Then they pay five hundred dollars and they plant nine trees back? Or, I'm assuming with the average lot size, is that what would happen in this case?
Well, that's what would, would happen, if you applied for a permit anyway, you could cut the trees down and plant nine trees. But now you have a five hundred dollar fine on top of it.
Oh, if you don't have a permit, okay, all right. Okay.
Bob?
You can also stay that penalty, right? That's the word here I get hung up on, the fact that even if you come back into compliance or replant, that the fee could be, the penalty could be waived, is that how I'm reading that?
Uh, so that goes, that goes to the Board of Adjustment, um, the Board of Adjustment decides appeals, and it's within the Board of Adjustment's power to, to to waive that penalty should they, should they find that you're actually fined. Uh, what the stay means is that we don't collect, say you appeal, you wanna go to the Board of Adjustment. I can't send your five hundred dollar fine to collections while you're waiting for that appeal. Um, we have to wait for that decision to be made before we can...
And then just one more thing, Matt, I apologize.
No, I don't apologize.
So, they've come in and they've clear cut, they've paid their five hundred dollar fine. Is there a time period for them coming, to have to come into compliance?
Um...
Do you know, uh, i- is that written somewhere else in here? How long do they have?
There's not a timeline in here, but it, it does have to meet the guidelines of, uh, thirty-two seventy-four C and thirty-two seventy-six, which talks about when you need a, a vegetation plan. Um, so typically, you would need that immediately if you've, 'cause clear cutting, grading, et cetera, falls under the things that you need a vegetation plan for, so they would need to go ahead and do that immediately. Civil penalties can also be assessed daily, um, so for every...
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm getting at.
If somebody, you know, continues to not come into compliance with the ordinance, we would continue to fine them appropriately.
Right, okay. I'm finished. Okay, Bob, you have anything on this page?
Nothing on this page, um, I just would like to caution everybody to, um...
Tim, you have anything on this page?
Yeah, while we were just discussing, the one thing that, um, I actually have run into this here recently, uh, as far as bush hogging, it says, um, and our cutting of grasses, weeds, and vines and so on as required for responsible property maintenance. We're required when we put our signs on properties that we're listed, they ha- they have to be back out of the right of way, usually back, the, we usually look at the water meter of the vents on the sewer system to see how far back to put it. Wax, myrtles, the little sassafras, little volunteers that come up on the, on the road frontage. Um, we clear that back enough to get our signs in there, I mean, it just, it's not like we're clearing a lot or anything, but it doesn't fall into what this allows.
Well, Tim, that's just not something we're gonna deal with today.
But it has to do with what we're talking about.
It's just not gonna be something we're gonna deal with.
So, if I go out there and I get charged five hundred dollars for clearing it back far enough to put a sign, that's a...
That's just not something we're gonna deal with.
Okay, well, then I have no...
Personally, personally, Tim, I think that falls under bush hogging, kinda, it's just a little clip, clipping around.
But it's not a vine.
It's not even a bush hog.
Right.
I, I don't think there would be nitpicky about that, I don't know.
Well, we're not gonna do that today.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, and so my comments on twenty-four, um, I am still confused by, and just something about the whole idea of this tree preservation fee, it just doesn't work for me. Um, but I'm more concerned about, and if I were going to, I think that we can, Matt suggested that we could either recommend as a board, or not recommend, that piece of it as a board, and that it would still go before council as to what the EAC was recommending. And council can choose, or choose something different. Um, but H at the top of the page, uh, on existing trees being a minimum of twenty feet apart, that again is another hard no for me, and I would strike that entire...
But I think that's...
Oh, yeah, that's almost impossible.
I would say, I would strike the, the spacing, but the existing trees intended to meet tree requirements shall be protected from damage during the construction process, that's something we need. Uh, but I would strike, uh, shall be spaced, I would should, I would strike spaced a minimum of twenty feet apart.
I agree with that.
And the and, so shall be protected from damage during construction process, because it doesn't, there are too many instances out there of existing trees that can and should, and people want to be preserved, um, that aren't twenty feet apart. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. And so, uh, page twenty-five, I'd just point out again that we do have a more extensive table in our UDO for commercial property, uh, in ten point twelve. Um, totally not clear on why this particular minimal list was chosen for the, mm, new plant material. And again, if, I just note the, at the top of page twenty-six, if there's, uh, any concern with the, um, seventy-six G one, about the, uh, additional credits, about the three trees meeting the credit requirements, that's also at the top of page twenty-six, and we need to be eliminated there as well. Okay. Uh, page twenty-six on the tables. Um, Tim? Bob?
Nope.
Natasha?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure the second table is restrictive enough. Um, a two-inch tree, let's see. A three-inch to four-inch counting as two. Let me just say this, I'm not sure I'm, I'm a fan of counting given multiple credits for trees, I think most people, when they drive by a lot, they're looking for quantity. Um, this table may be important, uh, especially if we look at implementing what Bob has proposed, because I do see it being helpful, but, um, I, I don't have anything really to recommend on it, but, um, I don't know, my first thought was to change it from two, two-inch to four-inch counting as one tree.
Well, that's our old table.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, and that's why you probably have a tendency to do that, because that's what we did two years ago.
Oh.
But this is proposing to change that.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
That, that can be made as an amendment, though, you can, we can make that as amendment.
Go back to your old table, yeah. Um, anything else on that page?
No.
Terry?
I, I have the same, uh, concerns as Natasha, and I'm, I'm prepared to, uh, make a motion for an amendment when we get to that point.
Okay. Um...
Terry?
In agreement with Natasha and Terry.
David?
Okay.
Yeah, I, um, again, think that, uh, what we had for planted tree credits, uh... is more in line with what we were trying to, with what we're trying to do with existing trees. Um, I'd also point out that, um, the twenty feet in, uh, top page twenty-four, the twenty-foot spacing is also in the table of the existing tree, table two, and I would also strike that. And just in general, uh, say that, and it seems to me that, you know, it doesn't say anything about two-inch to four-inch trees in the existing tree credit table getting any credit. Uh, and it seems like they should get something. And, um, you know, some of the, I'm not sure about the spacing on that, or, again, as Natasha alluded to, um, making it about the DBH, not about, not giving additional tree credits for existing trees. But in any event... Bob, on page twenty-eight, um...
Madam Chair, on, with regard to my submission, page twenty-eight, I'd like to make a motion at this time to sort of separate or divide the, um, discussion, and that we, in general, vote to approve what we've discussed so far. And then, let's talk about amendments, to keep this simple.
Okay.
I think we pretty much agree to everything that was discussed, or most of the things, sometimes somebody threw an amendment in there, which, so we should, we should maybe rapidly walk through those, but uh, I would like to make a motion to approve what we've done so far, and then let's take votes on amendments, and we can...
Then, then let's, uh, let me just run through what I think we have agreed to in terms of just those things like on page fifteen, uh, putting existing in for diameter breast height. On page sixteen, striking the last sentence under large tree and small tree as being regulatory, not definitions. Um...
Wait a minute. What was the last, Eric?
Sixteen, page sixteen, large tree and small tree, the last line.
Okay.
Uh, page seventeen, uh, adding the Z sixty-point-one standard for nursery stock in, uh, that first paragraph, after tree care protection. On page nineteen, in thirty-two forty-point-three, A and B, after development services staff, add, and the town forester. Uh, on page twenty, again with the diameter breast height for measuring existing trees. On page twenty-one, including the lo- the amended large tree and small tree definitions in this section as well, large tree would go before natural area, and small tree would be inserted before specimen tree, as well as, um, changing multiply to multiple in shrub, and capitalizing the Council of Tree and Landscape Appraisers under tree value. And then on page twenty-two, uh, again in thirty-two seventy-five A, we inserted and town forester after development services staff. Uh, in twenty-three, on page twenty-three, um, thirty-two seventy-six C, uh, we agreed to eliminate seven row, and say excluded from, instead of above, state the reference to the requirements. Uh, in G one, I think that is something y'all wanted to hold off for on, um, was that thirty-two seventy-six G one? But certainly some expression of, uh, potentially eliminating that, but that will be a separate motion. Uh, in four, uh, striking out or preserved, so the table does not apply to existing trees. And on page twenty-four, um, in H, we'd strike out spaced a minimum of twenty feet apart and, so it read existing trees intended to meet tree requirements shall be protected from damage during the construction process. Uh, thirty-two seventy-seven, we'd strike from hobby farms through landscape maintenance. And on page twenty-six, in keeping with, uh, the previous spacing, we strike out spaced twenty feet apart in the existing tree credit calculation table.
Madam Chair, are we gonna have a further discussion on the tree fund, or is that gonna be...
We will, we need to have, yes, but that's, that's what we're going to, you know, that's, those are those things so far.
What was the second thing you mentioned, change here, other than striking spacing twenty feet apart, what was the other item, I'm sorry?
The other item that I mentioned is the thing, the double asterisk at the top, but that will come back in when we look at the seventy-two or seventy-six G one.
Okay.
So, those were, uh, changes that, uh, there was certainly consensus to go through, so, Bob, you wanna make a motion to approve?
And to thank you for being so diligent about getting those itemized, 'cause that wasn't easy, so thank you, and I make a motion to approve those, a- and, and we can continue on and, and make other motions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so far so good. All right. Bob?
So, I would like to make a motion, thank you, Madam Chair, that we strike, um, on page nine, the letter G, item number one, that we strike the, uh, double counting of credits.
It's page twenty-three in our packet, it's page nine on the...
Yeah, I apologize, anybody playing the home version is looking at page nine.
Did you say twenty-three?
Page twenty-three in the packet.
The big, boom, okay. G nine.
So, did you make it?
One, I apologize.
Did you make that motion to strike that?
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll make a motion to just strike G one on page twenty-three.
My second motion.
Well, is it the time to do that, or should we look at your proposal first? Because I think if this is approved, that might be a helpful tool. I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I can, I can wait on that, I can wait on that, I just think the other topic may have more discussion. However, if we would turn, those of you on the board here, turn to page twenty-eight, which is the proposal that I made to increase the, the vegetation, and, um, basically, I'm making a change to A, thirty-two seventy-six, A, C, D, and E. So, I make a motion to substitute, you know, um, one, A, C, D, and E, as proposed in your packet.
So, so basically, let me ask you this, and this may help you anyways. Um, basically, what, and, and I think you have discussed this before, right now, we have two trees per so much. You were trying to get it down to just simplifying it, uh, so you don't have to divide and multiply. Uh, so rather than two, at fourteen fifty, you'd have one per five hundred, now, that's not an exact half. Uh, half of fourteen fifty would be seven twenty-five.
Right.
So, you would, uh, be looking at requiring more trees, uh, as a minimum than we do currently, is that correct?
That's correct, and the math, I did the, um... And the math, I did the, I did simplify it to doing the, instead of two trees per square footage, I did it to one tree. If you remember, the Orchard petitioner came here, and he was confused by that, and, and I don't see any reason why we have to have it by two. So simplifying it to the one, but, but the more important part is increasing it, and to give you the percentage, increasing it by 33%. So in a lot, the sort of standard lot that would require nine trees, this would require 12. I can talk through the others too, but I'll pause there.
I think it's 13.
Yeah, it is 13.
Yeah.
Using a 66. I apologize, I was using a 6,000 square foot.
Right.
Madam Chair, not to be argumentative, but Bob, have you built a house and tried to put that many trees around it?
No.
Okay, okay. Let me tell you from experience, what you're trying to do is impossible in practical application because of the size of the house, the driveway, the drainage system, all that, that's got to be put in, and when you got setbacks of 10 feet from the neighbors, you run out of space really, really fast.
Right.
And that's what the builders are having to deal with.
But, but I disagree with that, because I just built a house and I saved 19 trees.
Okay.
I had to fight tooth and nail, but I saved 19 trees on my lot.
I'm building a house now that had zero trees on it, and I'm having to plant 17, and I'm having to put eight trees between me and the neighbors that are 10 feet apart. Those trees are not going to survive.
Can I elaborate just a tad? I have dealt with that many times, my husband and I. It is doable, honestly, and we've had a few changes that you may not be aware of. And Rick, if I may ask you, so the requirements for stormwater have changed slightly in the material that we use. We used to use the, what I call packet material. I didn't like.
Peanuts.
Don't get me started on that. But anyway, Rick has some new material that we're using, and correct me if I'm wrong, we can use chambers now. Is that correct, Rick? Those chambers, from my understanding, can be installed under the driveway. That has helped us so much, in my opinion, when you're looking at a site plan, that now the driveway area is, has double use. It's stormwater control, and it's also the driveway. So it's opened up more room for us to be able to preserve trees. And if, looking at Bob's proposal, I'm calculating it would be about 13 trees, what, five in the front, the rest in the back. That's not, to me, that's doable. We've done it many times, honestly. And the reason I mentioned perhaps we shouldn't do away with that tree credit on the oak trees is because if someone were to plant three oak trees, the number of Bob's new proposal would be reduced to 10. So.
Hold on, Natasha.
Yeah.
No, hold on, because the particular item, you know, I'll mess it up again, but that particular item that I was recommending take out, that was where you would double it. So that those three oak trees, if they were three-inch, they would count as 12 trees, and that's why I was striking it.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was count six.
You were looking at the standard table, but that clause is where it doubles it.
Not six, it would be.
So, let's.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I mean, that's pretty much all I have to say about that, and I'm not sure some people really realize the benefit of the new stormwater installation, but you may not have that at your house.
We are putting that in under the driveway.
Uh huh.
But we have an 18 by 30 section on each side of the driveway.
18 by 30?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have to put like three live oaks in that one section. That's close together for any tree that's going to be a 20-foot span when it matures.
Um.
And we've got to put one, two, three, four trees on each side of the house.
Right.
And they are going to be like a 20-foot span, and the houses are 20-foot apart, so you're going to have trees scraping houses when they're mature.
I, I understand, you know, the concern on each side, on the side of the house, but if you drive through the Yopon section, and I point that out specifically, on the island, nature plants trees in clusters, and we're a barrier island with the hurricanes and, you know, the high winds. They, when they're planted, this 20 feet keeps coming up. I don't think that's a requirement, I don't think it should be a requirement, but that's my opinion. The trees help to, they support each other, and so I'm in favor of this, and that's my opinion. But I'm not trying to be arguing, argue or anything, I just want to look at it all.
I'm being realistic.
Yeah, me too.
On third row back from the beach, with the winds and the salt and the hurricanes.
Right.
And my neighbors have zero trees, I'm going to have 17. The aesthetic, aesthetics, it changes the total character of the neighborhood, no one else has that many, but with the ordinance the way it is, that's what we have to do.
Well, maybe, maybe third row is something we need to look at again, I'm not sure, but I can say that a large amount of our maritime forest has been destroyed, and we need to do what we can do to try to, to put that back.
Well, let me put great myrtles or something, wax myrtle, but that's not on the list, I can't do that.
Okay, so that might be the issue, maybe it's the tree type.
Exactly.
So, and Dara brought that up.
Yep.
I, you know, I know Yopons are, they are great in that area, so maybe that's something we need to address. And, and I realize first, second, and third row, that is a special area for sure, but I think what residents are looking for.
Even on this limited list, wax myrtle is.
Okay. I, I think what we're all looking for is, we're tired of driving by lots, and it appears that they've been clear cut, and two or three trees planted back on the front, and I realize some are on the back, but today, I want to walk away from here, and this is not directed at you, please believe me, I want to walk away from here and know that we're not going to deal with that anymore. It's wrong.
Well, it should be, excuse me, but it should be on saving and preserving trees rather than forcing the homeowner to plant a forest that they have no intention of doing.
Right. Well, maybe that's another discussion, I don't know, but, and I do realize on the other side of the Davis Canal, it is slightly different, but the majority of our homes are in the wooded section, and so.
And I just moved from the wooded section.
Yeah.
And I had a corner lot, we had trees, but if the current ordinance was in place when we built the house.
Yes.
We would have, we had trees and we saved trees, but we had nowhere near the number of trees that we're having to put on the lot we are putting up now.
Right.
And it was wooded. You couldn't have put, because the branches had all grown together, and they were spaced properly apart, nature had done its job, we didn't take out that many trees, but we had nowhere near that many trees.
I, I know, and, and I understand, but unfortunately, people have put us in this position that we're in now. I wish it wasn't this way, because I can tell you, it is easy to do the right thing.
Well, then it should be preserving trees rather than forcing.
I agree with you. I, I wish we could focus on preserving them and, and not clear cutting and, and all that, but I think this is, is perhaps a roadmap to that, to finessing the process, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Natasha, I was going to try to help you, but you don't need any help. I, I would like to move, move the question.
So your, so your motion, your motion was to, and what this would be, would be in 14, or 32761A, replace two existing trees shall be saved per 1450, with one existing tree shall be saved per 500.
So, so Mr. Callahan, did you rescind your motion on item G1?
Well, Natasha asked me to, to do this one first.
Yeah.
And the G1 is, I think you were misunderstanding the G1.
Yeah, I may, I may have misunderstood.
Yeah, no worries. It's okay, because it's, you know, chicken or the egg, so either way we can do this.
So 32761A would be striking, replacing two existing trees shall be saved for 1450, with one existing tree shall be saved for 500.
Yes.
And C, um, you're looking at one square foot for each 10 square feet, instead of 50 square feet for each 700 square feet.
Right, again, simplifying and increasing.
And then in D, you're striking two existing trees per 1625, and inserting one existing tree per five, shall be saved per 550. And then in E, striking two trees planted per 1450, and again, going back to the one tree planted per 500.
Yes.
So that is your motion, correct?
That's my motion, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor? All is opposed? Okay, David.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so that was the first piece of that, then you want to go back to.
Page 23.
Page 23, 3276G1.
Right, and that's the, the one that we were talking about where, you know, you get credits for live oaks, and we're, we should maybe even talk about increasing credits for live oats and increasing credits for four-inch live oats, but as written, doubling, doubling the credits here would allow three, three-inch live oats to equal 12 trees. And so my motion is simple, strike item one.
And would you also want to add, strike item, well, strike, strike section 3276G1 and, it's 23, and strike the double asterisk, which says the same thing at the top of page 26.
Thank you for bringing that up, yes, both of those, motion to strike both.
So that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Wait, wait, before we move forward, I just want to be sure I understand this. So with Bob's, what we just passed here, the proposal, on a standard lot, 6,600, we would have 13, an average of 13 trees.
Right. And if you don't strike this, you'll have, you'll end up with four trees.
I thought it would be 10.
Not with this, you would.
Because you plant, you plant three trees, they count as two each, six.
Right, but the wording, just the same one piece, so the wording, the wording of here says shall count as double tree credits, so you double the two, which equals four.
Oh, I got you. Okay, yes, thank y'all. Okay, very good.
So, the motion has been made, seconded, and clarified, all in favor? All right, I think, and I know that one other thing that we have was the, about the fund.
Yes, correct.
Can we take care of that before we look at what Carrie has? Carrie? I'm pretty sure, I mean, let me double check and make sure, I think that was the only remaining thing that we have not taken action on, that has been, is before us or has been Do we want to keep this or not? You know, I think that's the question, is it not? I know for my part, it's confused, I'm still confused by it, and I still think it's trying to make what would be a few people pay for something that they're not necessarily, it's a bit late to be doing something like this now.
Matt, just to reiterate, if we take this out of this document, it will still go.
It will still go before council.
Before council.
Yes.
They're going to make the ultimate decision.
Yeah, I mean, y'all's amendments doesn't negate the EAC's recommendations, so even these recommendations from Mr. Callahan will be forwarded as the planning boards' recommendations, but the EAC stuff will remain the EAC recommendation.
Personally, I think it should be removed, but if they choose to keep it, I think we should incentivize the developer or homeowner by removing the fee completely if they exceed our requirements. Which would be planting one more tree. That would be their way out of having to pay this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a point in that. The other, the other, the other thing that you would do to that, because we took out second row, and the rest of the ordinance, we had, second row ought to be taken out here at a minimum, to make it consistent.
And the other thing, I, I think this is open-ended, Dara, because, you know, how many tree, you know, I want as many trees planted in the town as possible, but how many do we really need? How much money do we really need to accomplish that? And if, if we implement this, we're constantly collecting, would be constantly collecting fees that would be in a restricted fund to be used only for that, and if there's not a need, then what do you do? Return that money to the people, or, you know what I mean? It kind of creates, could possibly create a situation.
Yeah, of course, that depends on a lot of other things too. David?
Can I make a motion just to strike those two sections on the, can I formally make a motion to strike those two?
It's a motion, is there a second?
Which two?
Which two?
The, and the I, this underlined, and then the sentence below that is really sort of part of I, I guess.
Yes, correct.
So it's all going with the TPF.
It's the I and TPF?
Yeah.
It's all, it's all dealing, the sentence after what looks like a separate section that's not sectionalized, that goes with the TPF, so it's.
Before we vote, if we strike it, though, could we not ask Matt staff to come back with some later additional discussion on it, just for better understanding? I feel like the EAC's brought it forth for some specific reason, concern, how, so how we can strike it from here, but then what?
It will still go to council, and council, I'm sure, will ask for that as well.
Yeah, I mean, as I explained a little bit, it's really to give people a reason to try harder to keep trees, and then when they can't keep trees, it gives the town a mechanism to fund new tree planting. You know, certainly, if this board doesn't recommend it, like I said, it will still go to the council as the EAC's recommendation, and the planning board will just have recommended something different.
But I think, I like Natasha's thought process regarding, when do people, when can you get, have this fee waived? Is there a way to, to do more and have it waived? I think that's what I'd like to learn more about.
Well, and again, we'll, uh, may I suggest that we see what council does with this, and that we can always come back, just like we're coming back with the permitting process and the heritage tree and those types of things, we can always come back and revisit something along these lines that may be of some benefit without being burdened to a handful of people.
And, you know, I mean, this takes it a little further, but what, you know, what next? Would another board look at this and say, oh, well, we need public restrooms, we need showers, so every, everybody new coming in to build houses, we want to implement a fee on you so we can benefit over here? That's, that's the one-way outlook of this?
Yeah, right, right now, the, the, that definitely the General Assembly has covered, that would be illegal. But that could be something else that, you know, in terms of, I'm sure what Matt might want to present to council, or if we look at this again, another time about, you know, some of the legalities and so forth and so on. But the motion is to strike the tree preservation fee portion, and that was, Natasha, did you second that?
I, I do second Matt.
Okay, so, all in favor? And that is unanimous, okay. Matt, I believe that gets everything, except I think we probably do need a motion to adopt the proposed consistency statement on page twenty-seven.
I'm going to text amendment.
I'm sorry, you did, my bad, my bad.
About to say, I didn't think we covered everything.
I am so sorry.
I know, we're trying to move along, but let's do talk about this. Okay, this is a text amendment, proposal regarding, let's see, let me get you all pointed to the right, thirty-two dash seventy-four, C4. There's a copy of, just because it's long, I'll give you guys a printed copy, and I'm not inferring about anybody's vision.
What page are we on?
It's page twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Right, okay, okay.
C4.
Gotcha, sorry, I missed that.
Detailed expansion on the, the language in item four. I've given you all hard copies, again, no inference about anybody's vision, I printed this off of my phone, so I apologize for the huge text font.
It's welcome over here.
It's three pages, please. But, but the, the, the impetus for me bringing this forward has to do with, you know, one of my key concerns with the vegetation ordinance is always preservation of our existing large trees and protection of those trees. So, this particular text amendment, which is long, and I can read for the benefit of the audience, so I propose to move to, "Location of trees to be left marked with an L on the plan worksheet, trees to be removed with an R on the plan worksheet. In addition, trees to be left will be marked by the owner, agent with a ribbon at breast height, and the critical root zone shall be protected by proper installation of barricades, fencing, and signage from vehicular movement, material storage, compacting, grading, excavating, and other development-related activities during construction and in final landscape design. Tree protective fencing shall be shown on site plans and grading plans around each tree, cluster of trees, at perimeter of tree save areas, and at limits of disturbance. Town staff shall confirm correlation between submitted plan worksheet and on-site tree protection fencing prior to any permit approval. No equipment allowed on-site until all tree protection fencing has been installed and approved. Tree protective fencing shall remain in place through completion of construction activities. Town staff may periodically conduct site visits if a tree required to be protected is destroyed, damaged, or dies as a result of negligence or failure to comply with requirements of this section on the part of any property owner and/or agent of the owner within three years after completion of construction. Then a, a replacement trees of a similar species and size shall be planted on-site, and a fine of five hundred dollars per tree shall be assessed to the owner and/or agent." Now, I realize there's a lot to this, and it encompasses a lot, and will generate lively discussion amongst us, I'm sure, but I feel like this is good language, extraordinarily protective of, especially our large oaks, our grand oaks, our heritage oaks during construction, so I will open up for further discussion.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
I just thought we might want to discuss prior.
I can make a comment on this.
Natasha, yeah, I welcome that.
Yeah, I know that this, we tried this years ago. Oh, I'm sorry, Dare, um, is it okay if I, are we good? Okay. We tried this years ago, putting fencing around the trees and everything. The contractors had a problem with that, we legitimately did, because the lots are only a certain size, and you have the large, you know, building footprint for the house, when you're, we don't have many places to lay down materials, move equipment, and everything, and when we're trying to put fencing around the trees, that just creates more of a issue during development. I mean, I know, I know, looking at it, it, it does seem like the right thing to do, but I can say that it's difficult. Especially now, that the island is so built out, oftentimes, we're building, you know, a house where two, there are houses on either side, houses across the street, we just don't have a, a place to put things, and if, if we're required to put fences around the trees and, and all, it's, it's just going to create a, a problem, I think.
I, I, I wouldn't have any problem with limiting this to a certain tree size or height.
Right.
That would require these protections, maybe one of the grand heritage classified trees.
Can I, can I suggest that, because, I mean, I, I would have said a lot of what Natasha said, plus I'll also say that with all this planting and existing, trying to preserve, preserve existing, what this will get you is trees cut because they can't have the, they don't have the area to do that, so we'll lose more trees because of this, and we were doing that before, which is one reason why we got rid of it.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, we'll lose more trees if you require something, and, and there's other definitions for critical root zone, what have you, we do have at least a statement in here about protecting trees, and certainly if, but I think in terms of what you're looking at with the heritage and so forth, that certain types of trees should have greater protection than. I would ask that we put this on our list of things to come back to us in next month, and with the heritage trees, and with the permitting process, and, and some of that type of thing. Also, in terms of, you know, keeping, keeping it within three years after construction, there was something to that effect in the proposals we got in December that has been taken out, and if we want to revisit that, that's fine, but, but I would, I would ask that we take this and add it to our list of things to look at more carefully next month, because it is rather involved, and there are other definitions that would need to be addressed with this as well, and, and like I said. I think if you're not careful, people will just end up cutting the trees.
I didn't think about that, Dare, Mr. Trump.
I don't understand why would, why would something like this get more trees cut down? Help me understand that.
Because they can, because they don't have to, they don't have the room to work around, they need to work, ring, work around, maybe they wouldn't get exactly your critical root zone, if you know what, and there are different definitions for that, but they have nowhere to work, they're going to cut the trees, build the house, and then plant two-inch trees, I mean, that's what they're going to do.
Yep, they'll just cut.
They're more subject to do that.
Well, that's why we need additional grand and heritage tree protections.
Well, and I understand that, and, and y'all, and anybody may disagree with what I'm saying on this, I'm just saying that's what I have seen before.
And I like your comment about the heritage tree protection, I mean, if it's not every single tree that we're trying to save, you know what I mean, it's just reasonable. It, it's almost like the feds raising the interest rates, if we just turn it up just a tad, and then move in maybe with something else, kind of see what a difference these changes have made. Now, I will say that personally, we haven't experienced a lot of tree damage on, on our job sites. The damage that has come was from stormwater, cut, you know, having to cut so close to the roots, and that's what I saw, you know, as far as causing the trees to die.
Really address that about, in terms of how close you can cut the roots and that kind of thing, if you really want to address the root structure, then that's something entirely different than this, and we don't have that.
Yeah, to your point, Madam Chair, surely, I'm not a, an arborist or a, a tree forest expert, but, so certainly, it probably, we need some fine tuning and some, some changes with, with the appropriate relevance.
Yeah.
But I would like to keep it, I would like to keep it, to go forward with it at some point, some consideration.
I'd like for us to see it next month.
Carrie, you put a lot of work into this, thank you.
I would be in agreement to, to deferring it to next month, but we must have some type of tree protection, and more importantly, we must enforce it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, I think now we can get a motion to, with the amendments and the approvals of edits and whatnot that we've had already. We do need to make a motion to approve the plan use plan consistency statement on page twenty-seven.
Madam, Madam Chair, if you would just allow me a little latitude, I would like to read into the record just a statement that I have, and this is regarding, Natasha's brought it up twice, this is regarding stormwater, and I hate that, that Rick has left, but I hope he'll, I'll be happy to pass this information.
May we make a motion on this, and then I'll, you can say whatever you want to.
We're doing it one way, then we're doing it the other, so whichever.
Well. If it's not an amendment to the consistency statement, then.
However you want to do it.
Can we have a motion to adopt the associated plan use plan consistency statement on page twenty-seven?
As, as we just amended.
On the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt, as amended, the plan, what, consistency statement.
On the motion?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't do, everything that we've done so far, we didn't adopt the consistency statement, because I was waiting to get through all of that, so now we.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so now, I'm asking to, for a motion to adopt the plan use plan consistency statement on page twenty-seven for the proposed text amendments to chapter thirty-two.
And Natasha, either made the motion or seconded, right? And run the motion. So, I thought we were going to be, be looking at table three, did, on page twenty-six, Natasha started to talk about it, and I, I thought it was worth talking about. But, so, there's a concern that two-inch trees, you know, we should encourage the larger trees, and, but if there's no appetite today to make any motions.
Well, and that, that was, that was the issue that I was going to raise, had we gone back to it, and that is, I'm just, I'm just concerned, I'd like to see us beef up the size of the trees a little bit, if I understand the difference between two inches and three inches is one year growth.
There's two inches, there's three inches.
Camera four, pick, pick this up.
Right, so my comment would be, I would just, and it doesn't have to be today, but my comment would be, I'd just like to see larger tree, larger trees required.
Okay, and the table three?
Yes.
Did you have specific changes, Terry, to put forth?
Well. Instead of, you know, I just, I just changed the numbers of the tree credits, so basically no tree credits for planting a two-inch tree, but if you plant a three to four-inch tree, you would get one credit, five to six inches, two credits, seven to nine, three, and ten inches and greater, which nobody's going to do for.
What, what do, Natasha, what do you think of that?
The only, as you, you guys know, I have mixed feelings about the tree credits, but since we have, looks like we're going to implement Bob's changes to require more trees, which I think is great, I'm a little more for the tree credits, because it brings us, I hate to use the word bring down, but I think it will incentivize planting oak trees because it will bring the number down. Some people argue that the amount of trees that we're requiring is, is not doable, but they can bring it down by using this chart. I had the same question, I mean, at first, I was thinking proposing a, from two to four-inch tree would count as one, and then a five to six would count as two instead of three.
The only thing about a two-inch, the viability of a two-inch tree is not the same as a four-inch, I don't think, right?
Well, here's the thing, no, not necessarily, I have, we've had planted the oaks, we haven't had a problem with those, the problem was in finding the trees. That's the only thing, you, you can find, yeah, it's hard, you can find a two-inch oak tree and really not have much problem with that, but when you start going up from there, it's like, it's crazy, yeah, they just don't.
You don't find them in containers, but you can certainly get the bag and burlap, or ball and burlap.
We've, we've driven.
There's some in hash.
Nurseries have anything.
Yeah, Phillips out on seventeen, I, I know they have the two-inch, but oak trees, it takes so long for them to grow, their nurseries just don't keep them around.
Which is why we need to be keeping them from getting cut down in the first place.
In the first place, yeah.
Yeah, and, and hopefully, some of this will move in that direction.
I, I would withdraw my suggestion to change, rather than changing to a two, two to four-inch DBH, because I think in that situation, they're not compelled in any way to put in a three or four-inch tree, they're going to always put in a two-inch tree.
Right.
Well, then should we just keep it as is?
Just keep it as is.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that.
Are you saying no credits for a two-inch, Terry, is that still?
No, no, I'm just saying leave it as it was written, one, two, three, four, five, right down the line.
Okay.
And did the environmental advisory committee, did they come up with this?
I think everything you have in front of you was passed by the environmental advisory.
It doesn't matter, I was just wondering.
They approved it, just like many things that, that all boards and committees, even council, may end up approving, they don't necessarily, each individual person, you know.
I'm for leaving it the way it is for now, personally, and then see how things go, and hopefully, we've made a huge difference today.
Since we're, well, first thing will be to see what council does with it.
Well, yeah, that's true.
The, since, since we're back on this, this page, and I apologize, there was some reference to coming back to the table three, and I just missed that, but also on the existing tree calculation table. Trees two to four, if we're going to go with four, five to, five to ten. Trees two to four, if we're going to go with four, five to, five to ten being two, so does, does, you know, two to four-inch tree get, existing tree get a credit?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's true.
And so, so I would.
It's the bonus kind of thing. You, you, you get one, right?
So I would, I, I guess we need another, I don't know if we need another amendment. We just, just need to say, you know, in the existing tree credit calculation table, we do need to vote on it because we've already voted on all the other ones like this.
Right.
We would insert existing tree DBH, two-inch to four-inch, and number of tree credits would be one.
Perfect. I like that.
Question, question on that?
Yes.
You know, looking at it from both sides. So what I think you're saying is that if you have a two-inch tree, two to five, or two to four point nine-nine,
Yeah.
you get one credit. If you have less than two, you don't get a credit for it.
Correct.
Got it. I understand.
So I'll just make the motion to insert.
Chairman, I'm sorry. You still technically have a motion on the floor to adopt the plant consistency statement.
Well, I can rock that in with this. So I'll make a motion to, because it wasn't, well, we all withdraw your stuff or either add this to it.
I'll withdraw in a second. You can withdraw your motion.
I don't know what to do. Just tell me.
If you'll just withdraw your motion.
If you'll just withdraw your motion in a second.
Okay, I withdraw the motion so we can deal with this.
So we can put it all together. I'll make a motion.
We're backing out of the driveway. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to insert in the existing tree credit calculation table, existing tree DBH of two inches to four inch receives one tree credit. And to adopt the associated land use plan consistency statement on page twenty-seven for all of the proposed text amendments to chapter thirty-two. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I, I second.
All those in favor? Thank you. It is unanimous. I am going to take a break.
We are recessed until I get back.
Kirkland, I think, yeah.
Staff has obligation at two o'clock, so let's rock and roll soon when we get back, please.
Well, I have, I have an obligation to see that. I want to. I'll call me back to order after our brief recess, and thank you for that. Terry, I believe I had promised that you could say whatever it was you wanted to say.
It, it didn't apply to the vote. It's for future discussion, so I'll, I'll hold it in the interest of time, and I'll present it at the next time we're together.
Okay. Next item of business is the, what was one point four, the proposed text amendment to six point five table uses about amusement facilities. And that is. Starts on page fifty-seven of your agenda packet. Matt?
Okay. I'm going to move through this quickly. I apologize for that because, as I mentioned, staff's got a heart out at two o'clock. So this is an item that Land Board member Mr. Callahan discussed at the April twenty-twenty-three meeting. And Bob, thank you for your prescience in moving this on the agenda because I did want to make sure we had a chance to discuss it. So you have Mr. Callahan's proposal in front of you. As we mentioned, we discussed this in the April twenty-twenty-three meeting. And I was, you know, kind of summarized, you have it in your agenda packet, Mr. Callahan's proposal would replace some of the uses in the table of uses of the UDO with two broader terms that he goes on to define for amusement, comma, indoor and amusement, comma, outdoor. Then these uses would be permitted as special uses with supplemental regulation in the commercial low-density zoning in the industrial zoning districts. As I mentioned, he would create new definitions for these terms as well as supplemental regulations for height, size, hours of operation. On the screen, I have the uses that are in the table that the proposal would replace. Game rooms, golf cart tracks, miniature golf courses, privately owned outdoor recreational facilities, skating rinks, water slides, and commercial recreation establishments. As I mentioned, this would then become special uses in certain zoning districts, and we'd add some supplemental regulations under the proposal. This proposal would affect several zoning districts, whether some of these uses are already permitted, as well as the ones in which they would be proposed. Your packet includes the purpose statements for those zoning districts. I won't belabor them. But CB is a commercial zoning district, commercial recreation, commercial low-density, and industrial zoning. Fly through those. The way it's worded and with our current ordinance, there's a couple of other uses that could potentially fall under this. I've tried to identify a few of them there. One of the ones that we mentioned in the staff report is bowling alleys. Bowling alleys are specifically identified as an indoor amusement under this proposal. However, they're still in, under this proposal, under the table of uses as something else. That's the kind of thing that we've worked hard to try to streamline, so we definitely want to think about that going forward. In addition, billiards, bingo, dance halls, driving ranges, enclosed gun ranges, movie theaters, skateboard parks, tennis courts, commercial. There's, you know, certainly questions about whether these would fall under some of these definitions or not, and something we would want to work out. Let's see. I would point out that this would not affect any existing applications for these uses. For example, we have a special use permit application that councils decided to give some additional time to the applicant for a mini golf. Applicants in North Carolina have something called permit choice. That means if you apply for a permit and that permit is valid and the town changes the rules, not only can you go under the old rules, if the new rules are more advantageous to you, you can choose to go under the new rules. So that's, that's called permit choice. So any existing applications would fall under that permit choice. Most notably, the current one we have for a special use permit for a mini golf. In addition, there's currently no other zoning controls for hours of operation. We do have some noise ordinances that go between eleven PM and seven AM. We are, we always have a general noise ordinance standard, but the nighttime hours are more restrictive. So in addition, when we look at our adopted plans, in addition to the zonings, there are several future land use designations that these, we find these zonings in that could potentially be affected. So the board should make sure that whatever they do is consistent with those land uses. Once again, they're in your agenda packets. So in the interest of time, I won't belabor them and read them off on the screen for you. But several thoroughfare, commercial, neighborhood, commercial, neighborhood commercials is kind of a long one, so there's two slides for that. Commercial mixed use, residential mixed use. Those are the future land uses where we see these zonings that would be impacted. Finally, town council at their last meeting directed the staff and the planning board to implement one of the recommendations from the UDO audit, which includes modernizing the table of permitted uses, in general, reduce the number of similar uses in the table in favor of a generalized use. I should say office on the screen. I got of ice. In addition, ensure all the uses provided in the table have an applicable definition. This proposed amendment certainly trends, trends in that direction. It consolidates several uses under the table, tries to define them appropriately. But staff would recommend that, considering that there's a few other conflicts and some kinks, we would want to work out that we consider revising this amendment as a part of that broader discussion and revamping of the table of uses. But certainly, this board can initiate a text amendment and make a recommendation to town council should it want to. Staff has taken the liberty of redlining, making a redline draft similar to what you always forward should you want to act on Mr. Callahan's recommendation. And Mr. Callahan took the liberty of including a consistency statement in his, in his draft as well. So it's at the pleasure of the board at this point, how you would like to proceed. And if Mr. Callahan obviously has any discussion on his items and.
Bob, you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Director, Matt, would you keep your slideshow going? Because I would like you to go back to, I'd like to point out a few things to help correct or help clarify some of the director's comments because I think we need to move on this. I think waiting around for improvements all over the place puts us at risk. And frankly, with the interest of time, I can, I can, you know, conserve my words here. We, we run the risk of running, having these Myrtle Beach-type garish attractions and, you know, like the, like the miniature golf with the waterfall and the lava coming out of the volcano and the noise and so forth. We, we are, you know, we used to say probably most in every meeting that we weren't Myrtle Beach, number one, and number two, we were a small-town family beach. And if you go to that miniature golf place on Oak Island Drive, that's a small-town family miniature golf place. And I think we need to not have aerial parks, zip lines, and so forth, but they're not in our table of uses. And if you don't put them in your table of uses, they're allowed, okay? And I, I want to make a couple of comments to, to respond to this because I think we can pass this. I'm not saying this is perfect. I'm, listen, I'd like to hear your amendments, but I believe we can pass this with a few changes. And I'd like to address some of the comments that, that Matt has raised. If you would go back to maybe like four slides back.
Which particular one you're looking for?
Oh, you don't control? Oh, you do control.
I do control, yeah, but which slide are you looking for?
Keep going back to the, I think you had the uses there. So that's it. So there's, one of the things is that I did have a typo here or an omission. So in my proposal that I gave to you, which is on page sixty-two, up, up at the top where I say, replace the table of use entries for, okay, table, page sixty-two at the top, I don't have bowling alleys in my proposal. So that, that needed to be added, and I appreciate Matt for finding that because I do put it under, I do consolidate it into amusement indoor. Now, in terms of bingo and billiard and pool halls, well, yeah, we could, we could talk about those. Again, this is the great being the enemy of the good. And frankly, you know, when I had the drive-through proposal to, to take drive-throughs off of Oak Island Drive, I was told there's problems with the language and we don't recommend it. Well, no one's made any amendment to fix the language, okay? So if, if we're going to fix things, you know, it's called boiling the ocean. So let's put something in place that protects us from the Myrtle Beach-type activities. So billiard and pool halls, they may be able to have some of these things. Bingo, dance halls. I think that we, gun range, I don't think we have to worry about a gun range. A gun range is a gun range. It's, it's got ammunition, it's got firearms. It's not associated with pinball machines and, and so, so on. Golf driving ranges, I do address that because it, we have a clause that says golf driving range is not accompanied with a golf course. So if you have a golf course, you can have a driving range. I'm talking about these top golf kind of places and so forth with the lights and the second story and the big nets. These are not what mainland Oak Island is for. So I think this is confusing. Now, when it comes to skateboard parks, that's an outdoor park. That's like a tennis court, same thing. We're not, and it's, and I do, under amusement outdoor, item number two, it says right on it, outdoor recreation excludes parks and open spaces. So that's what skateboard park, that's an outdoor park. So this is kind of confusing things, movie theaters, it's confusing things. We're not talking about those items. Would you move to, to the next slide, please?
I'll just very briefly, once again, you're right, you include in the definition driving ranges without accompanying golf courses, but once again, that's something that was not recommended to be addressed in the table of uses despite it being a use disidentified in the table of uses. I just wanted to clarify that. So you would then have a definition that says that a driving range without an accompanying golf course is an outdoor amusement, but we would have a driving range without an accompanying golf course as a separate use in the table of uses. That's, and similar to the bowling alley, that's, that's something we want to make sure that we get clarified should the planning board move on this, so.
So, okay, so I need to make sure that bowling alleys gets put into section, the top section where I say replace those. So, and I also need to put in the driving ranges without accompanying golf courses to make sure that I clean up that table of use. So I'll, I'll make those as amendments coming up. The, the, the other thing is, if you could, okay. So again, honestly, I feel like either I don't know this UDO or maybe the director doesn't know the UDO. It says currently, no other zoning controls for hours of operation are in the UDO, okay? What would you refer to or how would you address what we have for food trucks as hours of operation? We also have childcare, seven dot four, seven thirty-nine is daycare adult, outdoor food trucks are seven forty-three, seven forty-four is outdoor sales. Tattoo parlors can be open till two o'clock in the morning. We do address zoning controls for hours of operations. And, and frankly, when you get into an S, you heard me talk about the S in SUP. That's full of gray area. That's what the state gives us the ability to do with S's. It allows you latitude. The zoning code allows us those special regulations. Those special regulations, it's time that Oak Island starts using them. That's the lack of protection we have. You can have a use like a bowling alley or something like that. You can have a use like some of these activities, but we can't say that they're allowed to be used around the clock and till late in the evening. Some of these things need to have a time required, like the food trucks. So we don't want food trucks on the island at two in the morning. So we do regulate zoning controls. I want to finish. So if you would mind moving to the next, next slide. So then we come up with, talk about confusing the issue. The land use plan was put in in, in seventeen. Six years ago, we put in the land use plan, and it had visions of coming up with a thoroughfare commercial zone, okay? Well, you know what? We're going to write a new land use plan before we ever stick that in. And then there's another one, residential mixed use. These are things that maybe they were good ideas, but in six years, they haven't been put in place. And now we're at risk of getting a beach life miniature golf course that they came in with no real plans, but now it's a, now it's an issue. And so I, I'm asking this group to talk about this. We've got sixteen, seventeen minutes. I believe we can vote on this and take action because as, as, as the director says, once somebody comes in and puts a permit in for a zip line across that, you know, the old miniature golf place that we have? It's a nice family place. It's quiet. It, it kind of fits our island. Once somebody comes in there with a zip line proposal, they're going to get it. Because as he says, unless we start to put some protections in here, that's what you're going to get. And frankly, I can tell you right now, we probably won't get a zip line, but we might get an eight-lane Chick-fil-A with the drive-through. So that's what we should be concerned about as well. Madam Chair?
Just very briefly, speaking about, I won't confuse the issue with the drive-throughs. But this is exactly staff's point that a considered approach needs to be made to this because as we mentioned, there's things that could fall under these definitions that aren't included. There are certainly other factors to consider. But as I mentioned, this is the board's decision. Should they want to, you have all authority in the world to initiate a text amendment and make a recommendation to town council at this time. But you have been directed by town council as well to consider modernizing the entire table of uses and doing a full review of that. So it's the pleasure of the board, a hundred percent.
Thank you, Matt. And Bob, one thing I want to make clear, we are adjourning or at least recessing in about ten minutes because staff has a hard previous commitment, and we're not continuing a meeting without staff. And so before we, you can make a motion, we can vote, but before we get into any discussion on that, I want to know if anybody has a suggestion for a date and some time certain when we can recess is needing to finish because we still have two other old business items and three new business items. items and three new business items. And we aren't pushing those until the June meeting.
Does Madam Clerk have a recommendation for her availability and Staff's availability?
So, Lisa, you or Matt, and Matt, because you're the staff, we need to be here.
What about next Wednesday?
I can't do it Wednesday.
Monday?
I could do Monday.
Yep.
I won't be here Monday.
I mean, I wish you all would change your 10:30 time, too, because I think it's too late to start a meeting. I think it's.
9:00 is fine with me.
So, 9:00 would be great.
I agree.
No, I can't do 9:00. But y'all can do it without me.
Do you do it remotely?
No. Sorry.
9:00.
I mean, there's work, work commitment and other things.
I'm out of town all week next week.
You're out of town all week.
I'm out of country, actually.
Yeah, so.
Monday, I've got 11:30 and 1:30.
But if we start at 9:00, maybe?
If we can be finished by 11:00.
11:00, okay.
I can do it.
Carrie, Carrie, you're out, you're out of country.
I'm out of country. I won't be here all.
I can, yeah, I can do it.
I could do 9:00.
You're talking about on the 22nd?
I'm talking about this Monday.
This Monday, true.
Yes. Matt, is that good with you?
Oh, I'm wide open. You know, you'll tell me when to be here next week, and I will be here.
Bob?
I'm available.
Tim?
I probably will be able to be here, yes.
Thank you.
Well, 1, 2, 3, 4, I mean, we've got to have a quorum as well. So, it sounds like we've got a quorum for, so when?
At 9:00. Monday at 9:00?
Monday at 9:00. Okay, so at the end of, you know, 1:58 or whenever Matt gets up and starts walking out, I will recess the meeting until that date and time. All right?
I would like, also, if we could ask.
So, now.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I would like to ask that we look for another meeting as well. It is almost impossible to get seven people together in three days, but if we said, "How about next Thursday or next Friday?", we probably can. So, let's meet on Monday at 9:00, but let's plan for another meeting to handle the rest of those items. You know, the trees are really important, but we spent a lot of time on the fourth or the third reading of the trees. So, anyway, with regard to, so let's try to, let's try to in parallel work another special meeting, or another recessed meeting, if you will, another date for, to recess.
Well, that will be one of the things that we'll talk about in our agenda items that we haven't gotten to for next week.
Right, I only wait till the last minute to try to schedule.
Do you want to?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve by adding in bowling alleys and the golf ranges, the driving ranges without golf courses, and to make a change to the, I think I had a typo on 20,000 square feet. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We need to make a, I apologize, your technical motion would be to initiate a text amendment and recommend Town Council approve. So, I just want to make sure that that's.
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I understand Staff's suggestion for waiting, but when I look at the timeline for getting to the, to getting to making adjustments on this, it stretches out six or seven months. We're at risk every day. We are. Every day, somebody can come in and do something that shouldn't be done on this island, because we, we open the door for them. So, I'll be supporting this, I'll be supporting this motion.
Any other discussion? And did you include in your motion something about the, is there a consistency statement with this?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair.
On page?
63.
63.
I basically, I have a summary here, we have a couple of seconds. From the land use plan, the various goals, there's several wonderful goals, some of them we, we sort of do and some we ignore. But goal number one is to address the family beach atmosphere, and I think we do that by, by maintaining the, the current Oak Island versus the future Oak Island. Goal four is to support improvements to the community appearance as an important tool for economic development and neighborhood preservation. I think these kinds of activities with the one lot that we have for commercial zoning, one lot level depth for commercial zoning, you don't need a zip line next to residential's, residential uses. And then, goal number eight of our land use plan is to always consider, in our deliberations, any negative environmental impact on the, on the island. And I think the lighting and the exterior lighting of these activities, and the noise and the traffic, is not what we need on the mainland. And they need some supplemental regulations put on them. So, that's the consistency statement. And if I could, I'd like to restate with my motion that I want to add bowling alleys to the replacement tables and the, the golf with unaccompanied golf courses, the driving ranges without accompanying golf courses, and change the typo and make it 20,000 square feet. It's a typo at the moment down in outdoor amusement.
Listen to Zero, I see it now.
And does this apply to the island and mainland of Ireland?
What it does is it, it turns things into SS. If you look on the bottom of page 62.
Yes.
It says that you can have, with a special use permit, you can, you can have these uses into CLD and industrial, which is the mainland, but, but also with the.
We don't have an industrial.
With the, Madam Chair, with, with the second S, that means you have supplemental regulations, and those are included above.
Okay.
On the motion, Madam Chair?
So, we have a motion and a second. All who's in favor? All who's opposed?
Thank you, members. Motion to recess.
Quickly, before we do that, I do want to point out, just for clarification, Staff's role in the town, especially in these proceedings, is to present you with the town's adopted policies. Now, certainly to Mr. Callahan's point, if those are outdated, if those are, have changed in some way, certainly this Board and Town Council has the opportunity to say, and it's actually written into the statute, and it says, hey, if this is out of date, you can, you can go on the fly. But our role here is to inform you of what those, those documents say. So, not trying to labor anything, just trying to say, hey, that's part of our, our role here as towns now, so. Don't want them to just sit on the shelf and gather dust.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And so, Chair will entertain, or Chair will make a motion, I'll just forget that. The Chair will make a motion to recess this meeting until Monday, May the 22nd at 9:00 a.m. Is there a second? Yes, all in favor? It is unanimous, I think. Thank you. All right. Good morning. I call back to order the recessed May 18th meeting, regular meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board. We will start with discussion of the tree protection overlay district was the next item on our agenda. And Matt?
Morning, everybody. Very briefly, we discussed this, this is a, let's get through a few things here, sorry. Here we go. This is a continuation of a discussion the Board had a few months ago, the March meeting. This Board discussed potentially recommending a tree protection overlay district. Staff had a couple of initial starter questions for you to get you thinking about, you know, what that might look like in a broad sense. In the, in the meantime, the Chair sent over some potential recommendations. So, to continue that discussion, we've identified her recommendations in your agenda packet, starting on page 33. You know, without more input and discussion from the Board, it seemed prudent to present these recommendations to you for feedback or adjustments or discussion, however the Board wants. And in addition, some more specific questions that come out of this, you know, how do we handle, you know, what if somebody needs a variance or an exception, or, you know, what do we do for, if somebody has a dead tree that's maybe covered under the tree protection overlay, pruning, permitting processes, just to keep the ball rolling and get everybody thinking about it. And then, where do we place this? You know, we have a chapter 32, which covers trees and vegetation. You know, we had a recommendation from the UDO audit to consider transitioning that to the UDO, you know, so definitely thinking about that as well. But having that being said, the original questions we had, you know, where does that overlay district apply? What trees should we preserve? How do we identify what trees should be preserved? Diameter, breast height, height, species, et cetera. Where should we preserve all those trees? How do we avoid making a lot unbuildable? If you have a lot that's rendered unbuildable by local government regulations, well, then guess what? The town has to pay the person for that piece of property at that point. So, definitely something we want to consider having a resolution for. Chairman Royal recommended an island-wide overlay district, so this would not necessarily apply to the mainland, to protect live oaks with eight-inch.
And Matt, let me interrupt you right there. Actually, I, I recommended a town-wide.
Oh, I apologize, that's right, you did make that correction. I apologize for that. That was a misreading on my part. So, once again, change that caveat to a town-wide overlay district to protect live oaks with eight-inch or greater diameter or breast height, within the front, rear, and side setbacks of an undeveloped lot, and in all locations on a developed lot. Once again, we include in your packet some additional questions for the Board to discuss and consider. Are there any exceptions that the town should make? Who hears a variance of that, and how is that processed? Consideration of what if there's a hazardous tree, or it's dead or diseased in some way? How do we regulate pruning, permitting processes, is somebody getting a process or permit to prune a tree, to chop down a tree, et cetera? And then, what section of the code of ordinances should we consider housing this overlay district in? We have two places where it could go, the chapter 32, or within the UDO in some way. So, really, all Staff needs on this, at this point, is some discussion on the Chair's recommendations, if there's consensus on those, and some direction on some of these other questions. We can certainly get cracking on having something in front of you, if that's the direction you want to take.
Thank you, Matt.
Welcome.
Let me start by, by just giving an explanation of where I came up with the answers that I had and, and to that. And I really just did this to get the, to get this back on the agenda, get the conversation going, so we can get something sooner rather than later, in terms of where to apply, to say, all properties in the town of Oak Island, and I mean developed and undeveloped, pre and post CO, which trees preserve, certainly the live oak gets the most discussion, but it could be any hardwood and softwood. I mean, there are other things that you could do, but I was specifically looking at protecting live oaks. It could be that we protect anything with an eight-inch or greater DBH, and that we give some additional special protection, like with the heritage tree. Terry, that you brought up last Thursday of a live oak, particularly possibly with a larger size. Location standards, certainly in undeveloped lots, you're looking at the front, rear, and side setbacks of those undeveloped lots. And the reason why I said in all locations on developed lots is because if they're already developed and they have preserved trees, whether they're inside or outside the setback, then obviously you can build on that lot without rendering it unbuildable. And a lot of people have preserved trees and have smaller building footprints than we have now. Some of you may not remember all of the single-family residential properties in the former town of Long Beach had a 30-foot front setback. And there are quite a few trees that if you went to the current 25-foot setback that was changed about 20 years ago, then you're going to lose more trees. So, I'm trying to consider what happens to existing trees on lots that have already been developed and have preserved a lot of trees, particularly in the front. And then, in terms of how to avoid rendering a lot unbuildable, I think the caveats for the previous question somewhat address that. If there's some other things that go along with that, then I would depend on other planning Board members or Matt to help us find out what those are, so that we don't run afoul of that. I know in camera regulations, buildable and unbuildable, you may not build what you want, but it doesn't mean that you can't build something. And so, I don't know how far we'd want to go down that road. And then, of course, there are the additional considerations that we need to give Matt some direction for, so that he can be able to flesh out the language for a real ordinance. And so, with that said, I will do as is our custom, and if we want to go down these key questions, starting with the ones previously, just question by question and get y'all's input. Is that acceptable to the Board? Hearing nothing to the contrary. David, where would you apply an overlay district?
Definitely the northeast side is totally different than the ocean side, beach side. So, we can't have one size fits all for an overlay district. It wouldn't make sense, and it would punitive punish people on the beach side, trying to make them equal to the northeast side. So, we need to find a line of definitive where to start and stop which side. Davis Canal seems logical for part of it.
What I'm hearing you say is certainly oceanfront, well, I'm not sure there are any trees of eight inches or higher, or live oak that's, you know, 12 inches or more on the oceanfront in any event.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying, what we have now is not fitting the island as a whole. And if we do overlay districts, that will help distinguish the two different sides and what would be saved on which side and what species.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Bradley brings up a good point when I was thinking about that, when the Chair mentioned that a town-wide overlay district, that's, that's not even an overlay district, that's just a regulation for the town to protect that. So, if that's the direction this Board goes, we don't have to create a district or map anything, you just pass some regulations for the protection of these types of trees at that point. Just wanted to chime in with that.
I thought maybe you might bring that up.
So, more or less, we could have one section, that would be eight inches or larger, and another section, say, a different species, three inches or larger, depending on the species that you want to save in each district.
Right, because there are, are different species that are predominant in one area, say, around the marsh area versus what might be back in the middle of the wooded area.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Terry?
I have a, maybe a slightly different take on this than my colleague, Mr. Bradley. I think we should do something townwide. I think that within, and maybe we end up with more than, either more than one overlay district, or we have sections within that overlay district to deal with the different types of areas that we have on the island and on the mainland. And when we specifically talk about the beachfront and say we don't have any trees there to preserve, I disagree. Look at the cable property. We don't want that property cleared by any means.
That's second. Right, I was just on that.
Yeah, but it's south of Davis Canal.
I understand.
So I think that we need to work to create as comprehensive an overlay as we can, dealing with as much of the town as we can. So that's where I am on that.
And I think what I hear you saying in that is that there would not be an area of the town that would not have an overlay district, but we could have multiple overlay districts that are crafted for that particular area because there are differences. Is that fair?
That's fair. I think we could, I think we could do that. If we're going to do it, let's do it right.
That works. That works for me. Bob?
Just a couple of comments at this stage. And I always say I'm not the tree person, so I'm not the expert. So we don't have a draft that we're looking at to edit, right? That's where we're at.
That's right.
And, okay. And I would agree with, my comments may be a little scattered here, I would agree with townwide. I am wondering why it's only live oak. Maybe that was your recommendation, Madam Chair, but we're only talking about live oak. And now Terry mentioned sizable trees, right? So there's species, there's size, there's location.
That's the next question. Yeah, I'm just trying to start the conversation.
Start the discussion, right. So.
Right now, we're on the first question.
We seem to have a long way to go, right? In that, but I don't think we have to take the long way. One of the enemies here of tree protection is delay, and folks do try to delay. And so, I mean, just look where we are now. So we're starting with a blank slate. So I think we need to quickly draft something. What's the, what's the scope, meaning the location, townwide, et cetera? What are the species? That can't be a too larger table. What's the size? That can't be too large a table either. And you know, I almost like to see an estimate of costs. We had a builder here the other day who said it's burdensome. I'm summarizing, obviously. And maybe we should really understand, what do we take to save trees that are over eight inches? How much cost can that be versus what's the benefit? I will bet you that the benefit, you know, really outweighs the cost. And instead of us sort of dancing around this topic about the costs and the cost, well, let's understand the costs because if we're making those decisions. But I really want to suggest that we don't waste time, and I think, I think we are, I think we are. So, thank to Madam Chair.
Well, and we need to give, we need to give Matt sufficient direction to bring us back language, and I expect to see that language at our June regular meeting.
Great.
Tim?
I think everybody's pretty much on the same page as far as what the goal is, but I agree with David on the beachfront, not that I don't disagree with you, I disagree with you too. When I first moved here, the Yopon hedges on the second row, where you could see where they were windblown, they were high, they were over my head height with the dunes and everything. So there's, if you just leave everything alone, and we didn't touch anything, then you'd see the Yopon come back, you would see centipede grass just seemed to grow on the roadsides everywhere. So there's areas of the island that seem to have, that seem to have plants that are more likely to flourish there. And even on the, on the south side of Davis Canal, on dolphin, pelican, I'm sorry, pelican, when you come over the Middleton Street Bridge and take a right, you've got a lot of big trees that, that are on that side of Davis Canal. And then they kind of, when you get to the second, first row, then you get your lower hedges. So how do we get there from here is, you know, what do you put on paper? Like Bob said, it would be nice to have something to really go from this point, but.
That's where we're trying to get to.
Yeah, so, but yeah, there's species that are native to the different areas of just the island itself that you'll see flourish.
And so that takes us into the next question, which trees to preserve, diameter, height, species. I think that we've decided in our discussions on what we've already done with the tree ordinance, that the diameter is the important thing. We're not going to try and, you know, distinguish between height necessarily, I don't think, on this. And that there are certainly live oak wherever it is, is something I think that people want to see protected. But there are species that, as has already been pointed out, and that are better suited and are thriving in different areas of town. And so one of the tasks, and some of those species may be, you know, some of the cedars and cypress, some of the Yopon hollies, that kind of thing, may not be eight inches. They may be three inches or four inches. And so we need to, certainly there are folks around who can help us with some input on that. And Matt, you probably already have a sense of that.
To some degree, I mean, I'd probably pull in our town forester for that discussion as well, because he has some knowledge about what species are suited to what areas, so that could be something we could discuss with him.
And what size constitutes.
Yeah.
So I think we want different species and perhaps some species, no matter where they are, and other ones that are specific, to give additional protection to those. Bob, would you agree with that?
Yes, I would. And when you mentioned we might have something for June, can we set expectations? All of these people turned out on a Monday morning for a meeting that really is, you know, a special meeting, if you will, or a recessed meeting. You know, can you imagine if this was six o'clock at night, how many people would want to hear what we have to say? Can we set expectations with the town? In other words, could we ask Matt to draft an ordinance that we could approve for June? And where he doesn't know the numbers or the species, just make them up, and we'll call that a draft, and then we'll refine it next month in June, and we'll vote on it in July? Is that a possible timeline we could set with the town?
I think it's a very doable timeline. And what I appreciate about people being here in the audience is hearing that discussion so that they can be thinking about recommendations that they might make to us and to Matt.
We do have a public input, don't we? No, I guess, yes, we do.
This was drafted out of, what's the program, Lisa?
Yes, that comes from the Agenda Management software. I can't create a new meeting, so I had to build from the previous agenda.
Yes.
So you've already had your comment on it.
There's no public comment for the tree overlay.
You've already had it in this meeting.
Which is fine. Yeah, no, I agree with you, we already had it. I was just, I saw it on here, so I thought, I didn't know we were driven by the software. Okay. But Madam Chair, am I too slack? In other words, should we approve it in, can we prove it in June and not in July?
Well, I think that depends on what language we get and what kind of input we get between this.
Fair enough. We might actually have a vote in June. That would be, that would be great. No sense of delay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bob. Anything more about diameter or species, Terry?
Got a suggestion. We have a town forester now. Oh, I'm sorry.
Terry's got the floor right now.
Sorry.
I'd just like to tag on to what my colleague said. We have two examples in our packet from Topsail Beach and Surf City. I would have hoped we would have seen a draft today with, maybe there are blanks in it, maybe there are questions, but again, we just keep dragging these things out for months and months and months. So I don't feel like we really have to answer these questions. I'm like, have the town provide us something using best practices from places that have overlay districts, and let's get on with it. So no, I don't have anything additional. I think it has to be a mix of things, but we're relying on our planning department and our town forester to use their expertise to give us a draft with best practices and best recommendations. And I guess one question I would have for Matt is, do you recommend an overlay district, a tree protection overlay district?
I mean, that's a great question. It's really a matter of policy. We do have certainly in our adopted plans, which as I mentioned in our last meeting, it's my job and my duty to inform you of what our adopted plans actually say. You know, we definitely have certain standards within that adopted plan that could be considered to support something like a tree preservation overlay district. You know, so that's about as far as I can go right there. But certainly, it's a matter of, this is something that, a discussion that the board initiated, the planning board initiated this discussion, the planning board would be setting this policy and recommending it to town council. I mean, if there's consensus that at this meeting that we want something, then I'm going to find a way to draft a consistency statement to support you guys in that endeavor. So, yeah.
Matt, are you done, Terry?
David?
One suggestion I have, now that we have a town forester, which has the expertise in tree species, DBH, could we not have him get with Matt, do a geographical overlay of the island, and in each section, put which species is well-suited for that typical area, just like we have our residential, our commercial, our different sections for business and residential. Do that for the tree specifics, species with a DBH to where it would be clean, simple, and easily understood by anybody that looks at it.
I mean, I definitely, like I said, intend to bring Rick into this conversation, and whatever the board chooses to have a consensus on recommending, you know, that's what we'll work on if that's what everybody would like us to come back with next month. You know, as I mentioned, it's our intention to receive this feedback this month and come back to you next month with a draft of something. So if it's, the chair in her initial was a townwide regulation, if after this discussion it's, well, we'd like to see species-specific mapping in some way, you know, that's what we would come back with. But once again, we have a couple of examples, as Terry mentioned, you know, in our last discussion of it. You know, if the board says, hey, Matt, bring us back what Topsail has next month, you know, that's what you guys will have next month ready to go, so.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, the thing that Topsail and Surf City, both of those ordinances, as I read them, are still specific to new development. This is specific to existing development as well.
I'm not suggesting that we use these verbatim. I'm saying there are cities and towns out there, and not even necessarily in North Carolina, but maybe South Carolina, that just because Matt got two responses doesn't mean that's all that's out there that have tree overlays. So I'm like, let's, let's do a little bit of work, find those areas. There's no need to reinvent the wheel if we don't have to, use what we can, and then tailor it to our needs at Oak Island. What I don't want to have us do is discuss this item for four or five months in a row like we've been doing on some items. I want to get it done.
Madam Chair? Fair enough. Madam Chair, I'm a little more stubborn, so a couple of comments, and not in a particular order. The planning director suggested that somehow he'll be able to craft a consistency statement. Well, goal number three of the land use plan is that the Oak Island will protect the tree canopy and all pertinent deliberations, okay? It's very easy to justify the consistency statement on the land use plan. Secondly, I asked a long time ago, I've been here three years, and thankfully I'll be off soon. I asked before, I was in, let me back up one, on the drive-throughs at, removing drive-throughs from Oak Island Drive, if you will, keep it short. This planning board approved it, and the planning staff recommended against it to town council. The planning staff stood up and said, the planning staff recommends that we don't do this because of the language wasn't right. So I think to maybe further Terry Carter's comments, does the planning staff endorse a tree overlay and recommend pursuing tree protections for Oak Island? I think we have our answer, Madam Chair.
Mr. Callahan, I'm trying to consider, certainly, as you just mentioned, the adopted plan has several things, place a greater emphasis on tree preservation, create a tree removal permit process, require tree protection standards for preserved trees, you know, it'll depend on the final, whatever this board passes. When we had the drive-through standards, once again, at this meeting, I said we should consider doing this through the audit process, and so that's what I did when we got to town council. There wasn't any surprise there because I had recommended that at this board, you guys take some time to consider that more fully. So certainly, as I mentioned, there's plenty of support for it, as you just mentioned, in our adopted plans. So what I don't want to say is yes, and then this board, I come back with a recommendation and you end up passing something totally different, and then, you know, I'm stuck at town council at that point.
If I may, Matt, I think what I hear the board saying is, in these additional considerations, that we'd like to see what you're, and after reviewing other ordinances besides the two that we have, have any conversation with the town forester, that yes, there would be exceptions and potentially variances, dead, diseased, and hazardous, printing of a certain percentage, and there needs to be a permitting process. And I would say since it's an overlay district, it should go in the UDO. But I think what I'm hearing the board saying, and what I'm sure certainly the audience supports, is that I'd like to have a motion to direct planning staff and town forester to come back to the planning board at our June regular meeting with a fully fleshed-out proposed overlay, tree overlay protection district.
Absolutely.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of special use permits. And that is on page forty-seven in your packets. Matt?
Special use permits. Board, to my knowledge, had some discussion about special use permits at their April meeting, and wanted a overall briefing and some discussion about special use permits in general. Staff has provided you with some information regarding special use permits in your agenda packet. If I can get my clicker to work here. There we go. So special use permits are a planning tool that local governments can use. It's authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160D, 705C. You have that language on page forty-seven of your agenda packet. We've touched on this a few times in meetings prior. When it comes to land use decisions and really decisions of local government in general, there's essentially three levels of decision-making that you can have. There's administrative, which is typically handled by town staff, although in some instances that can get deferred to the planning board or town council. Where basically, if you meet a regulation, you're fine, and it's objective standards, criteria, setbacks, height requirements, you know, you're either twenty-five. criteria, setbacks, height requirements, you know, you're either 20 feet from the property line, or you're not. That's an administrative decision. At the other end of the spectrum is a legislative decision, which is crafting ordinances, zoning map amendments. These are broad overarching decisions that are, like their name, purely legislative in nature. It's purely a policy discussion and decision. When it comes to things like text amendments and zoning map amendments, you have a consistency statement. There's a few guardrails in the statute about the things you're supposed to consider and talk about before you do one, but for the most part, as long as you're not doing something arbitrary and capricious, you're essentially granted wide latitude. Quasi-judicial is kind of in the middle. So you may set standards in your ordinance for what qualifies for something like a special use permit, or in the instance of a variance, those are set by the state. But there's discretion in those standards. So like, you might say, something has to be in harmony. Well, what is harmony? You know, that's a discretionary standard. In the case of a variance, you have to prove an unnecessary hardship. Well, what is an unnecessary hardship? Once again, that's a discretionary standard. To get it, those discretionary standard requirements, the state says that when you have these, you should have a quasi-judicial hearing. And so the idea is that you're, it's permitted as long as you can prove that you meet those discretionary standards, but you have to have a hearing to actually provide evidence. It's not something that you just submit a piece of paper showing you meet it, and that's it. So the decision-making body holds a quasi-judicial hearing. Quasi-judicial hearings are very regulated in how they can proceed. There's, it's very court-like, hence the name, quasi-judicial. There are certain requirements where the deciding body is supposed to come in without a bias, a pre-existing bias, they can't talk about the application prior to. The decision is supposed to be made based solely on the evidence that's presented in that hearing, and it's supposed to be based on competent substantial evidence. Typically, you can't, while you may be able to hear opinion testimony, you're not supposed to weigh it in the same way as evidentiary testimony. So, for example, if you say, if a person comes up and says, well, I see X number of cars on this road every day, well, that's, they've seen that. But if they say, I think something will be worse without, you know, some type of justification for that, those two things have to be weighed a little bit differently. In certain instances, you have to rely on expert testimony. So for something like property values, traffic impacts, the state actually says, like, no, that has to come from an expert if you have a question about those things. So like, an appraiser that seals comp, discussion of property values, or a traffic engineer, an actual licensed traffic engineer talking about the impact of the traffic. Once again, you can hear stuff from the town about, like, if it's beside somebody's house, and they say, I already, I've seen 10 crashes in the past five years, well, that's their For special use permits, the burden of proof is on the applicant, so they have to come in and prove that they meet these standards based on competent substantial evidence that's presented at that hearing. In the towns' ordinance, the town council reviews special use permits, that's under Article 4, Part 3 of the UDO. That depends on the jurisdiction. In some jurisdictions, the Board of Adjustment hears special use permits. In addition to variances and appeals, some places, it's the planning board. So it's really on a case-by-case basis, as far as who hears what. But the town council, if they so choose to do so, can delegate that responsibility to another existing board, should they want to. You also have in your agenda packet, some information from the North Carolina School of Government. Adam Lovelady, he's essentially the planning guru for the state, essentially. If you have a planning question that relates to how the law is applied, usually they're a good resource for you to pull from. In the discussion on quasi-judicial decisions, you can see it on page 48. He kind of waves some of the pros and cons. Essentially, you know, it gives a public hearing to review discretionary standards, so that's happening. But as I mentioned, the process can be strange to navigate, especially for property owners and citizens, or even a council, you know, it's kind of a weird position to be put in in some instances. On the other hand, you have some guardrails where, you know, you can't, you're not supposed to base your decision on opinion testimony. You know, the applicant has to come in and prove that they meet those standards. So it really is a balance about, you know, how you want to proceed, and it's really, you know, discretionary. Certainly, I've worked in jurisdictions that didn't have any special use permits, that was either permitted or it's not. You can also base use solely on a conditional zoning. So you might say, well, we only want this if it's in a conditional zoning district. And then that conditional zoning district has to be established in order to establish that use. Conditional zoning is a legislative decision, so, you know, that opens you up to more testimony, more input, but it also opens you up to that opinion-based testimony that you can base your decision on. So it really depends on how you want to balance everything. The town has several special use permit designations. We've relied very heavily on it in the past, not only to review new things, but to, you know, we have things on the island that already exist, but they're only permitted for new ones for special use permits. That also protects those existing things, because if you just say, well, we're not going to make it a permitted use anymore, well, if something happens to that use, it can't be reestablished, because they don't even have the option to come in and ask for a special use permit. So, you know, hurricane, fire, lightning strike, or even if they shut down for a certain period of time, that non-conforming use can't be reestablished if there's not even a special use process in place for that. So that's kind of a quick rundown of how the towns used them in the past, and as I said, there's some information in your packet as well. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have, or if there's just general discussion, that's fine, too.
Thank you, Matt. I'd like to say, just from the outset, given the history of special use permits in this town, when they are controversial, not all of them are, but I would like to see us do what we can in our review of table of uses process, if not before. And certainly, that could be something that would be prioritized in what comes to us for that, since that is a council priority, that we get rid of just as many special uses as we possibly can. If we get rid of all of them, it wouldn't hurt my feelings, because we have now the alternative tool of the conditional zoning. And that to decide either it's permitted or it's not in a particular district, and to, if it's, if there are some particular standards that we want in place for a particular use in a particular district, then state what those are, because going through the special use permit process, the end result's going to be the same anyway. And so that's just my two cents on all of that.
And that's another important tool, you know, as we just talked about at the meeting last week, you know, you can establish supplemental standards, so you don't have to necessarily make your standards discretionary. You could say, well, I'd be fine with it being in this district as a permitted with supplemental standards, and you say, oh, well, but it can only be this high, you know, it can only be this big, you know, et cetera. So that's certainly a tool you could use as well, absolutely.
Bob, you put this on the agenda, so I'd like to hear what you have to say about it.
I certainly do have some comments, Madam Chair, but I will be brief, because we only have till 11:00, and frankly, we don't need to waste people's time or our own time. I asked last month that we put a zoning change on the agenda for this month, but I was a few days late on the, using the planning board rules, and by planning board rules, I couldn't get it on the agenda this month, so at least we have a discussion. And thank you, Matt, for that, and please leave the summary on the screen.
Sure, absolutely.
Sometimes, you know, if you clean up, not, nothing negative, but I'd like to point to that. So we only can have the discussion, and I think we should limit the discussion and make it quick, so that we can get on with this meeting, but also, we're going to talk about it next month. I would suggest to anybody in the audience and to this board, depending on where you sit on the board here, you know, beware of people who say they support removing supplemental uses on the, on the table of uses. Just look at how many amendments have been made, how many people have proposed to make amendments, okay? So if no one has made amendments to remove them in the last 10 years, I don't think they're really supportive of removing them. I'm not really picking on you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that you took that position, and I'd like to have your vote next month. So, as I mentioned, for the edification of this group, but really fast for this group, the supplemental use is a land use tool, and if you read this school of government book that Matt discussed, it's got like five pages on this, and it's an excellent tool. It has its place. But when it has a special use without supplemental regulations, that is where it's a dangerous tool. It's like handing a chainsaw to a child. Chainsaw is an important tool, but you don't give it to a kid. And when you have a special use permit without those supplementals, the threshold is minimal, and so it's a misuse of SUPs, even though SUPs are a decent tool. Just to give you a feel, there's no discreet comparison ability here, but we have 47 table of use entries that have a special use on them. Southport has 14. So I think we need to clean up our special uses, and I'm talking about just the bare S. The ones that have SS, they can be as equally dangerous, because we need to investigate what the supplemental regulations are. Some of them say you conform to the real estate boards, you know, things, and similar state regulations, which aren't specific to Oak Island, they're just general. The other things are, as Matt, I would say misrepresented in our last meeting on Thursday, that we don't regulate businesses' operating hours. Well, that's the place in the special use supplemental regulations to regulate them. The idea is, and I'll be real fast for you folks out there, you know, you can permit a use and you can not permit a use, you can deny it, okay? And this allows for the gray area in between. The special use permit is for the gray area in between. And so it's a nice tool to use if you want to put in some specifics. So you might say, well, this business actually could go here, as long as they closed at 6:00 PM, but the state only requires that you comply with our other zoning ordinances. So it's, it gets misused, and it's a dangerous tool, and we'll talk about it more next week. So thank you, I mean, next month, sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, if I may, I was going to wait till a staff report, but I did want to apologize for that. You're right, I was incorrect last month, or last week, I apologize when I said that. I had on my mind the last special use permit hearing, if you watched town council discuss adding hours of operation as a condition of that particular special use, and did not pass it, so that was fresh on my mind when I wrote that. But thank you, Mr. Callahan, for correcting me last month, I appreciate that. That's why we do this in an open meeting, to have these discussions, because we're all just human, unfortunately. So thanks.
And Bob, I would say that, I don't remember, seems like we'd gotten to something like 30 in our former code, but yeah, all of the, all of our, what were then called conditional uses, in our land use code before the UDO was adopted in late 2018, had quite a number of very specifically crafted supplemental regulations, if you will, and requirements. And I have complained about that to council since 2017. But now we are finally in a position, below these many years later, with the direction from council to look at the table of uses, to start making some corrections to that. I've been at it for a long time, but I'm only one person. So I appreciate the support of this board in that endeavor.
Madam Chair, in my closing on this, I submitted a draft amendment change that got delayed, because I was late, to, it'll get discussed, and hopefully, on the June agenda. And I would ask my planning board members here to look at what I put in, and also look at, I did not exclude, I did not exclude the supplemental use permit from all of the ones that just had the S. Some seemed less risky than others, so I did the risky ones. So please, look at them. You may want to make amendments and change what I put in, and I would welcome that.
Yeah, and Mr. Callahan, we fully intend to have your, the stuff that didn't make it on this month's agenda on next month's agenda, absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or discussion on this? Okay, so we will see Bob's late request on our June agenda.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you. And thank you, Bob, for the work that you did on that so far.
Thank you.
So we had some new business items that were added last week. First is a discussion of town council's UDO priorities and holding special meetings. Matt, would you like to bring us up to date on where that is?
All right, let me get my updated agenda out real quick. Yeah, so town council, at their last meeting, directed staff, we had, as you know, as a part of the UDO process, the colleague identified some priorities that council consider working on as a result of the UDO audit. Council asked for, you know, if staff had their wish list of what would get worked on, what was three of them, I mean, they're all certainly important changes, but two of them were kind of quality of life, let's, you know, make our dimensional standards and tables more user-friendly, because that helps not just builders and staff, but it also helps people who, you know, don't know how far a setback is, or is there an exception if I want to build a deck on the side of my house? But the third one was kind of exactly what we've been talking about, which is the table of permitted uses. One of those recommendations was to modernize the table of uses, make sure every, every use in the table has a definition, you know, we've talked about this a few times, and that's something that, you know, staff has wanted to work on, and I'm glad that town council chose that particular priority to direct the board to work on. We presented a draft timeline, wherein staff would take some time to look at best practices, look at, you know, other jurisdictional inputs, you know, how do other, how do other places do this? Because there's a whole bunch of zoning out there in the state of North Carolina, and there's a lot of different ways you can set up your table of uses. You know, you could get extremely specific with the uses, you could get more broad with the uses, and put everything under a more broad definition, et cetera. So we want to get a feel for what that would look like. And then we want to additionally take time for stakeholder input. Certainly, when you start deciding what uses go where, you know, you want to make sure that you have a lot of voices that also chime in on that. So that would be the first couple of phases of it, would be staff looking at some examples, bringing those to planning board for feedback, if they have a preference for what that would look like, because certainly, it has different ramifications. You know, if you have a broad definition, well, you can fit more stuff under there, and it might be up to the town planner to say, you know, it's this instead of that. But if you get very specific and have a very specific definition for everything, it takes that out, but you have to keep the table super up to date, because you might not have a very specific use in there that somebody comes in for. And as we've discussed a few times, I have to, as a staff member, pick the next closest thing and make that determination. So if there's, once we get to that stage, if there's a preference from the planning board as far as how to address that, then we would, you know, take a step to do some stakeholder input, certainly getting involved with businesses around the island, property owners, et cetera, just to get their feedback, because you don't want to unnecessarily burden someone, you know, if we misidentify a definition, or we change a permitted use, you know, that, you know, somebody might suddenly be legally non-conforming, which means that a storm comes in and blows their thing, their business down, they can't build it back under any circumstance. So, you know, we want to make sure we're very sensitive to that. Once we get some of that input, then we would start drafting, bringing stuff back to planning board for some discussion. board for some discussion, some feedback, and then hopefully passing, and then repeat that same process with council, where we're bringing them whatever this planning board recommends for discussion, hopefully passing. Now, those two, as we know, you know, going through a code sometimes takes a long time. We spent several hours last week looking at the tree ordinance for the second or third time, so we wanted to make sure we baked in plenty of time for that review, especially if we end up going line by line through changes. So that's where we're at. It's our full intention to have that as a discussion item next month as well, with those, you know, with, here's what are some other jurisdictions doing, here's some planning best practices. I can speak from my experience, the general trend in planning is to move towards more broader definitions and more broader use tables, but, you know, once again, I want to get some feedback from the planning board, because there's, just like a special use permit, there's a duality to that as well that warrants some discussion in moving forward. So that's where we're at right now. Happy to try to answer any questions or do some feedback. We've already started reaching out after Town Council meeting, like the very next day, sent out a kind of mass email to other planning jurisdictions to get their, to send me if they had, if they liked their table of uses a whole lot, or if they knew some good ones. So we got several responses, so we have a lot to consider at our next meeting, for sure.
Matt, I have, I have two concerns, overarching concerns I'd like to bring up. I know you provided council with a timeline, which was somewhere in the order of six months, I think. And what I'd like to say that, I'm hoping that we can approach, that you will approach this process, and we can, in a manner that we can follow along and provide some, not wait until the end of the whole discussion, that here's the whole table of uses, that there are pieces of that that we can, somewhat like we did with the, with the audit itself, although there were some things in that that we've already found the table of uses, that we feel like we could go ahead and forward to council, so that we would be getting, making some progress along the way.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly do chunks, you know, if it gets into that, you know, our table already has, you know, kind of broad stuff, like residential, and then here's the specific uses under residential. So we can certainly consider that going forward, as if we want to, you know, work on blocks, and as we work on those blocks, kind of get them ready to go and forward those things along, absolutely.
Madam Chair, point of order, since Mr. Callahan introduced these three items in amending our agenda, I would like to hear from him first to hear why he put these items on the agenda, if that's possible.
Thank you. Madam Chair, thank you. It would save time. It's good to hear the planning directors' thoughts on these, but here are my thoughts. I asked for these three to be answered, so it could be formally discussed. I don't think we need a lot of time. Here are my comments. When we did the UDO audit, we prioritized doing the housekeeping components of the UDO audit first, meaning this stuff should be reorganized. We made almost no changes, other than the order or the organization that these things were in, other than some things were kind of redundant language, and we made recommendations to delete it. Those were the changes we made. But we did it that way, because while we were doing that, we itemized all the way through the UDO ordinance, all of the things that might be contentious, or things that needed to be changed, priorities, and I like to focus on the one that, right now, you can open a tattoo parlor on Oak Island, and it can be open until 2:00 AM in the morning, okay? That's probably something that somebody would consider urgent and needing of changed, okay? But it's been that way for, I don't know how many years, okay? And there's many others, and when we went through these, Carrie, well, we all, but Carrie made a separate list, and I know that the town clerk, Lisa, made a separate notation on the agendas, so that we could have it. So I've got a compiled list of, I don't know, 80 to 100, maybe more, and that's, that's just rough, because we said, oh, 2:00 in the morning for tattoo, that's an item, so that counts as one. But when you read, when we get back into that and read that, there could be five other things with that, but anyway. It was an urgently done process. We treated that UDO audit as important, and we had special meetings. Since the housekeeping has been done, we've had the West's top 10 get forwarded to Town Council, then we wait a month, and now we've got that broken down to three. I would recommend that the three that we now have prioritized are table of uses and two other housekeeping items. Let's put the setbacks in a different table, take them out of a picture, put them in a table, that's just more housekeeping. Frankly, they should be in both ways. Have the picture in the table, okay? Picture's worth a thousand words. Who cares? It's just housekeeping. We need to work on the priority items, and it should be done with an urgency. But why don't we, and that's what I wanted to make a motion, that we would have a special meeting in May, June, and July, to work on the priority items. Let's bring back the list. I can produce my list, Carrie can produce her list, town clerk has hers. Frankly, I took Lisa's list and incorporated it in mine. And let's work through the priority items that this board sees, they're priority items, but we didn't want to delay the audit by getting into the discussion, should a tattoo parlor be closed at 9:00? No, no, 8:30 would be good. You know, that could go on forever. We wanted to march through and do the reorg of the UDO. But now somehow, there's no urgency to fix the priority items. Sounds familiar, like the, no priority to move the SUP items. The UDO is underserving what I would say the majority of this town would like to see. And that's how we end up with Myrtle Beach miniature golf places being proposed, aerial parks, zip lines, and all kinds of other crazy stuff. I'll get off my soapbox, Madam Chair. I'd like, thank you. Well, you know, I'm playing to the audience, and that's kind of obvious, but I think the town of Oak Island, I think naively thinks that the UDO is protecting them, and it's not, okay? And it needs to get changed. Not in every spot, of course, it's fine in many spots. Madam Chair, I make the motion that we hold a special meeting in May, June, and July in order to work through the priority items, and I can present, I can present my list to use as the priority items.
Bob, I appreciate your sense of urgency, but I would, before there are any motions made about any special meetings, I quite frankly think that's out of order. We can do that as we did with the UDO audit itself. I would appreciate that and give that more thoughtful consideration to when people can be here and so forth and so on. Yes, I do believe we need to start having special meetings, just like we did with the initial audit process. But I'd also wonder how the lists, which probably occur in multiple, which do occur in multiple sections of the UDO that you're referring to, Town Council has, as I understand, it selected one priority to start with, and that's the table of uses. So my question from that is, how do we do both of these in tandem, and what kind of reception will that get from Town Council?
Sure, and certainly we can begin work on those things. You know, you've received some feedback from the Cog on those, and as you mentioned, you just had your discussion on those things. In addition to those 10 priorities, we also went through Wes's recommendations and provided Town Council with, these are the things that we didn't, that planning board didn't feed forward to you, because they needed some more policy discussion. So some of those things have been presented to Town Council and identified as well. But to that end, you know, the special meetings that we had, especially to go through some of these stuff for the UDO audit, was possible because we did contract with the Cog, and frankly, Wes did all the work. I just sat up here and looked pretty, and when y'all asked me a question, you know, I tried to answer the question to the best of my ability. So if the planning board has a consensus to work on these items, I think it would behoove us to get some direction from Town Council on that, and some consideration as to whether, you know, some, especially with the town manager, to discuss whether or not we need additional staff to house those meetings, and, or contracting to do those meetings as well. But, you know, if the council recommendation is to do it, you know, we'll do it, absolutely.
Madam Chair, I believe there's a motion on the floor. I would second that motion for those special meetings. And I have a question for staff. As Mr. Callahan mentioned, we, as a board, came up with 80 to 100 items on our UDO that need to be looked at and reviewed. When they went to Town Council, 10 were presented. And then subsequent to that, they were asked, staff was asked for a priority list, and so three were brought back, which I agree with my colleague, I believe two of them are housekeeping items. My question is, and the council specifically asked for the, in a meeting, asked for the larger list, to my knowledge, that larger list that this board compiled has never been presented to Town Council, and I want to know why.
Yeah, we actually, as I just mentioned, we took Wes's recommendations, and I looked through all of the things that, you know, we had identified as policy items that needed a bigger discussion. Those lists were provided to council in our agenda briefing reviews as well. So they do have some of that feedback as well, based on Wes's audit report. And so anything that the town, that this planning board didn't forward, because it warned in a larger policy discussion, we went through and highlighted all those items and said, hey, here's the things that are in the, that full, however many page UDO, not just the 10, the whole UDO document that Wes produced, and said, these are the things that planning board identified as a policy change, that they're obviously in the UDO audit is needing work, but they didn't want to forward it to you because it needed a broader discussion. That has been provided to council as well.
So if we go through our 80 to 100 items and compare them to the list of 10 from Wes, then we'll find, we should be able to identify all 80 to 100 items in that 10-item list, is that my understanding?
No, no. So Wes created 10, top 10 priorities of the Cog audit. In addition, all the stuff that you guys worked through, you know, you had several pages of this section, we need to change this, this section, we need to change that. Council got that full list as well, so several pages of all the stuff that you guys worked through, every single line item that you worked through. And then on top of that, we took, based on your discussion, and said, there were several things in that list that you didn't actually forward to change in your housekeeping things. So we highlighted those and said, these things that are highlighted are not only changes that the Cog recommended outside of the top 10 priorities, but these are also things that we haven't, the planning board hasn't sent to you yet, because they weren't an additional policy discussion at that point. So that whole, however, all 10 sections in the appendix, all the things that y'all didn't change, because you said it was a policy discussion for later, they've been notified that those things haven't been done yet, because they do warrant a policy discussion, and they've been highlighted in that way, yeah. But that's separate from the 10 priorities that Wes sent along as well.
But they have that information, it's my understanding.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it's, the motion to discuss the, have a special meeting for the sole purpose of discussing the UDO audit priority items, or the policy items, as we used to call them, is on the floor. Can we make the motion? I mean, I made the motion, can we have this, and it was second, can we have a vote?
When you make, what was your, your motion, again, was just to have one a month? It was not setting specific dates, nor was it checking with staff or planning board members about their availability?
Okay, so we'll continue. Can we get this scheduled? I would recommend that we schedule it as late in May as we can, so allow people to adjust their schedules and hopefully make the meeting. And then have the town clerk or the planning director poll the folks for a second meeting in June and a second meeting in July. I don't think we should try to waste more time in these meetings by going around this group and asking for dates, and 2:00 is okay, I know 3:00 I'm going to the doctors and so forth. Let's poll the group, but let's schedule, try to schedule a meeting now for the, late in May. The delays, delays, I mean, I've said this before, and it's kind of a cliche at this point, but I kind of believe that, you know, we're delaying zoning, and we're delaying protections in the process. And that's how you get the Board of Boardwalk Hotel, as big as it is, and that's how you get the miniature golf, Myrtle Beach, which we'll talk about soon in the sign ordinance section. So let's, let's try to schedule a meeting, but if we want to do it the painful, drawn-out way, let's, let's go for it. So how about Friday, the 26th, for a special meeting to talk about the UDO priority items? 10:00 in the morning.
No, I'm not going to be here that day. I realize my schedule may not matter to the board, but I'm sorry, but I'm off.
No problem.
I'm taking vacation day.
Which day?
And you deserve a vacation day.
Body of this week.
How about, how about the 25th at 11:00, 10:00 AM? Thursday, the 25th, 10:00 AM.
I can't make any days this week, because I'll be working. I don't have to be here.
All right, I'll go that more difficult way. 8:00 AM on Monday, the 29th.
We're not open. It's Memorial Day.
Ask Memorial Day.
30th, Tuesday.
Sorry, I hope so that way.
You know, folks, I mean, you can see what's going on, so I won't explain it, but let's go to Tuesday at 8:00 AM.
Be at work.
Can this, these five people make it?
I can make it.
By the 30th?
You could always say yes and then vote no on the, on the vote. That's always another tactic that we, that some people play, David.
Yes, my question is, do we, do we have to have timed certain meetings to vote on the motion? Can we not vote on the motion?
As long as we can drag this out, use the hour, and delay protections, we're doing it.
And then, and then have Madam Clerk give us dates that she, that are acceptable to she and the staff, and see if we can find something.
So May?
A suggestion for setting the May one now, and then we can poll for the others.
That would, that would be great. So we have a motion for, on the floor, why don't we take the vote, for 8:00 on Tuesday, the 30th?
Can I make one other suggestion?
Sure.
I mean, we actually open at 8:00, so if we did 8:30, maybe we get, everybody gets in, the doors are open, public can come in, I think it would be easier.
Perfect, 8:30, thank you, thank you. 8:30 on Monday, Tuesday, May 30th, Eastern Time.
I'll be at work, I've said.
So you won't make it?
No.
Okay.
But I don't have to be here.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. How about Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning, the 31st?
Understand, I will be working in the mornings every day next year.
Oh, so Tuesday at 1:00, pitch to your win.
And I typically work from 8:00 to 3:00 in the summer.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
I typically work from 8:00 to 3:00 in the summer. I do take off our regular planning board meeting days.
3:00 on Thursday, on Tuesday, the 30, 3:00 on Thursday? That's, that's actually probably better for people, Tuesday at 3, excuse me, Tuesday, May 30th, at 3:00.
And that gives staff, what, an hour and a half?
Well, I mean, they stay late for Town Council meetings, can they stay late for planning board meetings? Let's do an hour and a half. How about Wednesday at 3, at 2:00? Oh, you work till 3:00 then, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Some days I'll work till 5:00, Bob.
Let's, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, if you would poll people, we know that we can't address these. It's been proven that we can't address these. It's been nine years since these people, things have been in the UDO. We don't intend to address them, I kind of proved that. Madam Chair, if you would poll the group, that would be great. Thank you for special meetings on the UDO priority items. You could do it via email, would that be okay?
In other words...
For June and July?
For June and July.
There we...
And I think that would be Lisa's, I would turn that to Lisa, to first email us the dates and times that we would have staff, and then going from there to poll all the planning board members, to see when we can get a quorum.
Thank you. So on the vote, I guess, do we have to vote for that?
I would like to call a question on the original motion to schedule special use, or special meetings, at least for June and July, with the town clerk and staff to find dates acceptable, and then poll the board.
That's what we just said.
Second that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
So I'll second that.
That's a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Madam Chair, if you allow me to go first, I may be able to make the second topic on the new business, go quickly.
Sure, Bob.
So the second item is the discussion of the sign ordinance. And on May second, I asked the planning director to review a property, a business property, for their sign outage, sign, signage that they have and its compliance to our town ordinance. I, a couple of months ago, I recommended that we review the sign ordinance, and it got delayed because we were putting together the Wes's top ten and, and the town council top three, which by the way, is Table of Uses, and that's an enormous amount of, of work that the town council has asked us to do. But I asked for a, a compliance review, and I heard nothing for three weeks, and then last week, Matt said to me that, oh, we're, we're looking into the lighting, and there's something on the lighting on that business that you, you put together. Now, I sent the picture of this property, it's a business property, but I don't want to call them out in this meeting. I don't think we need to call them out in this meeting. But what I wanted to do was to understand, the, the planning board folks know the building that I'm talking about. What I wanted to understand was how this business complies, because I don't believe it does. But if it complies, that's clearly an indication of what we need to do regarding the signing, signage ordinance. If this building complies, then we need to change the signing, sign ordinance. And, and real briefly, we, we regulate signs in many different ways, right? And, and maybe, maybe this would be a good time for, for Matt to correct me when I do a little summary. So based on the front wall, you can have so much square footage of sign, based on how big your front wall is, right? The bigger the building, the bigger the sign. A small place can't have a huge sign. Same thing with the side walls. The windows, I believe, have the same kind of thing, they can have twenty-five percent signage. So based upon all your windows, you get twenty-five percent of that square footage signage. And then there's projections, how far can something stick out, right? Stick out off the building. And then there's a canopy, some people have a canopy for shade and for rain, but you can have a sign on your canopy as well, and that has square footage as well. Then poles, you know, you can have a pole thirty feet high and, and columns and so forth. So what I, the business that I asked to look at, I got no response, and that's disrespectful, frankly. Of course, I might have missed the email. But what I'd like now is to have Matt, the director of planning, maybe correct me wherever I'm wrong here on how we regulate a storefront signage. And the reason I bring this up is, we have some folks that are go, I would say are going over the top. And, 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 you know, I've heard town council say this, and I've been saying it a lot lately, but town council has said, we're not Myrtle Beach, we're not going to get like Myrtle Beach. Well, some of the businesses are going a little over the top with the, with the signage. And I really would like to protect this business. I've got nothing against the business, but businesses will do what they're allowed to do, or what they feel they would like to do, as long as it's allowed. And it's up to our zoning board, us, the planning board, to make recommendations, and our planning director, to make recommendations to us for approval. And so in this week's, this month's board report, I put together a little summary of the negative and garish appearance of some businesses, and the impacts, the economic impacts. It hurts us all. It hurts the business, it hurts the neighbors, it hurts our overall town. And you'll see that in my board report when, when, when we get to deliver it at the end of the meeting. But if you would, maybe, Matt, if you could, because of the interest of time, I don't think we need a lot of time on this, because we're not going to discuss signage ordinances, because there's no need to discuss those. Did I kind of represent how a storefront is regulated for mis, oh, and lighting, I forgot the lighting part of it? So if you would.
Yeah, so in, in general, I mean, you're correct, we have signage regulations that regulate things like wall signs, window signs, the lighting of those signs, the size, the placement, et cetera. Certainly we rely on, in, in some instances, people bring in potential violations to our attention. The particular one you brought up, we actually do have active violation case, so it's not even in review anymore, it's, it's actually.
For signage, last week you told me it was, it was for lighting.
I, I believe that there's some other violations there, I don't want to get into the specifics of an ongoing case.
But is it on signage? Is it, is it, what I'm trying to do, I, I, I think I'm right, I apologize, but I just don't like to waste time. So I think I'm right in generalizing how we regulate signage. And the issue is, is if you go by a business and the signage looks, takes you aback a little bit, it looks a little too much, it could be in violation. And, and the question is, you know, we're supposed to be a small town, family friendly. And in some of our businesses, look perfectly fine, many do. And some of them are, what happens is, is the bad apple starts the deterioration, and that's what I wrote in my board report, about the deteriorating, what, what the trend does. And the Myrtle, Myrtle Beach miniature golf with the, with the volcanoes and the, and the lights and the roar of the lava coming out, that's not what Oak Island is about in my mind, and I don't think it is, certainly nine years when I came here. And so what I want to know is, later on, maybe you'll respond to my email, and, and tell me where the, the violations are. Because if they're in violation, then we need code enforcement. If they're not in violation, we need zoning changes.
Yeah.
And that's what I'd like the guidance on. How is this business over the top? Where is it over the top, so we can, we can get code enforcement, but also where we can make changes where they're technically, legally complying?
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent, that's, that's how all this works, is we actually have a pretty well-used contact form on our website for anybody who has a potential code enforcement violation, that goes directly to our zoning technicians who handle code enforcement. And then, you know, they go do a site compliance visit. If there's still prob, you know, if they, if we bring them into compliance and there's still potential problems with the site, yeah, then that's something that would require a text amendment at that point, so absolutely, we, you know, that happens all the time. You guys talked about, if you recall, a few months ago, we recommended an allowance for air conditioning in the site setback a little bit, and that followed a similar process, where somebody contacted the town, oh, this is not something that really is doable out in the real world. So in that instance, we recommended the change, but this is the planning board, and you can certainly initiate a text amendment, that's under your authority to do so, so absolutely. And there were some signage issues there too, as well, Mr. Callahan, yes?
Well, I, I would like to see that, the effect of the code enforcement, right? I would like to see this business and the planning board members have the picture of the business. I'd like to see some changes, and I guess I'm going to, you know, have to propose changes in the remaining time that I have for discussion and for, for awareness. You know, we, we have businesses that do, you know, that do a great job, I don't want to call out even the good ones, but there are folks that the building looks beautiful, looks nice, they do redevelopment. In fact, your real estate office there was one of them, and the other real estate office on the other side of Food Lion, they did a nice job when they rebuilt that building. And, you know, people spend tons of money to make the town look good, and the others take the town down. And some of these businessmen, I'm not criticizing them, because they're looking to make money, and they deserve to. But they need to have guidance through our zoning ordinance as to where they, where they can do it, and how they can do it, and how it brings up, a rising tide brings up all boats, if you will. And my board report, I go out of my way to explain that in the board report. So thank you, Madam Chair, for this item.
Hold on, just, in case anybody's not aware, the town recently hired an economic development coordinator that has experience in downtown redevelopment. I also took the liberty of, if you don't mind, Mr. Callahan, forwarding your information to her as well, since she has a background in, in some of these issues that you bring up. So just wanted to throw that F-line out there as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one clarifying question, at the risk of, um, so in the particular case that Bob has brought up, what I'm getting out of all this discussion is that there is a code enforcement case being worked on that, or has been, that will bring that into compliance. But then, Matt, do you have, once that's done, then, I mean, out, out of that process, would it be appropriate for you to see, okay, is, is our ordinance not giving us what we want? Or is it going to be a matter of continuing to have people complain and say, well, this is not how we want it, we want it like this? And for an existing case, and I've asked for this before, and we didn't have the support to carry it forward, you know, things like signage, Bob, um, once they're in, they're in for the duration, they're grandfathered unless you put in an amortization clause.
Yeah.
That makes them bring it up to a changed standard, a new standard, within a certain period of time. And so is there any interest in doing any of that?
Um, so yeah, I think it might be a productive exercise that, you know, you have the before picture, should we be able to work through our code enforcement process to get these folks into compliance, maybe have an after picture and say, okay, what problems still exist, and what do you guys want to address? An amortization process, I've only worked in one jurisdiction that, that did one, and typically at the end of it, if you have anybody out of compliance, it gets pretty hairy legally for that, now you still have, you know, we found them to be in violation, et cetera, but, yeah, it, that's a years-long process usually, to go through amortization, so.
Yeah. All right. We ready to move on to the next item? Discussion, code of ethics adopted by town council. Bob, you brought this up?
Yes, I brought it up again and asked for it to be formally put on the agenda, because I sent an email in, and I got, I've got no response in three weeks. So besides the, besides the disrespect for board members on the, on the planning board, and ignoring emails, when in fact, we were requested, we, we were requested, it's, on this, if not, we got a new code of ethics sent for appointed board members, and the second-to-last sentence says, I understand that I am responsible for reviewing this and asking questions if I do not understand any part. Well, I asked two questions, and they've been ignored. So I asked to have the agenda amended and put on the, on the meeting to be talked, be discussed. And as I mentioned, well, I won't repeat last week. So the two questions that I have, right? It says on section one, I'll have to find the exact wording, it says, without going through the entire thing and boring people, a code of ethics is a great thing, it's about open government, and I'll, I loved it, I signed it immediately. But then when I read it, it just sounded a little bit, a little bit off, and that I, board members are restricted, in a sense, to not speak when the petition, when the position of advocacy is contrary to a council policy. Okay, so without anybody explaining, you know, too much, I'll, I'll take anybody's input, because I asked for input. How do I know what council policy is? Maybe I'm very happy to not advocate against a council policy, but if I'm not allowed to advocate against a council policy, what other council policies, can I have a list? So where are we on that? How do, Matt, maybe it's the clerk's job to respond?
Uh, yeah, I haven't had any input on the ethics policy, I'm sorry, I can't.
Did you see my question? When I was asked to ask questions, I asked one. Was it referred to anybody?
Mr. Callahan, I, I'm not trying to avoid the question, but I really don't think it would be appropriate for me to speak for council members. I mean, there's five council members and a mayor, they're all elected, and it just, they may have six different opinions about why the code of ethics policy was needed, and what, how polit, their policy should be carried out and enforced. I mean, I just, I think, I'd be glad to forward that question to council members if you'd like, but I don't think it would be appropriate for staff to answer that question.
Okay, so when this said, I should ask questions, it should have said, I should have asked questions of town council?
Possibly, we can make that change.
I waited, I waited three weeks, forced it on the agenda, came here on a Monday to, to be told that. Thank you. The next question that I had, and maybe it follows in the same regard, I'm not sure if it's part of our policies, I think it's part of our policies, and it's maybe, no, it's not part of the ethics, it's part of our policies. This is the one that kind of aggravates me a lot, because I've been, I've been bounced around a little bit on this. When a, when a board member is out, is absent, one of our board members is absent, this, this question was ignored too. When a board member is absent, and I think it's three times, it doesn't really matter, it could be three times, or it's more than three times, it doesn't really matter. If those absences are unexcused, they can be removed from the board. Not sure how they can be removed, but they can be removed. But I wanted to understand, how do you get an excused absence? I assume you asked the chair for an excused absence. On what basis is that allowed or disallowed? And, and are those absences accounted for and tracked? That's my first question. Does that, does, do I have to ask town council for that?
No, sir, I'll answer that to the best of my ability, there are some questions in there that might be opinion, that yes, would be, need to answered by town council. But as far as the absences, it has been the policy, or not a written policy, that a board member would ask the chairman to be excused, or say they couldn't be there for whatever reason. With the adoption of this new policy, it specifically states in there, and I'll be happy to hold the board accountable to this, that there has to be a vote by the board at the meeting to excuse a member. As far as whether, you know, that's weighted differently than an unexcused absence, that is what would be a question for council. I would keep track of who was present in the meetings that I attend, in the minutes. I would hope that whoever's doing the minutes for the other board members, board meetings would keep track of that as well.
Well, thank you. Without belaboring this any longer, I just believe that, I don't think that excused or unexcused should be, should matter. If someone has a sick child, or someone has an appointment with work and so forth, they're absent. And, and if, what, what I believe that the, this board should be concerned with is people attending. And if you attend, you're here to do your, the business, and if it's excused or unexcused, you're not here. And we need people to be here, and we need people to do the job of, of the planning board. And so excused, unexcused, what's the criteria for denying, what's the criteria for allowing? Are we counting everybody's absences? I just thinks it's more, more toner on paper and, and not, not worth it. The, the, the criteria should be if you're here or not, and excuse or otherwise is, is the reason that I brought up the question, and I hate that I'm keeping people here longer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, and, and Bob, you could even get into, I don't think it addresses that, whether they're regular meetings or special meetings. I mean, there are all kinds of ways to address that. I agree that we want everybody to be here when they can, and that everybody has reasons from time to time when they cannot make a meeting, that even isn't something that they could zoom in for. And appreciate you continuing to advocate for having that put in place.
Thank you.
But as Lisa said, um, we have a policy that's been adopted by town council and given to us, and any further questions or discussion about that, or how it's to be implemented, we need to address the council. But I appreciate your bringing that up and putting it on the agenda to have a discussion on it. Any other comments? Okay. Board member reports. David, you got anything?
I am good.
Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have something I'd like to read into the minutes, and I will provide the clerk with an electronic copy, if it would be helpful for her to incorporate. I actually wanted to make this statement last Thursday, when we were talking about the tree protection ordinance, so since I didn't make it then, I'm going to make it now. And what I want to say is that we're finally doing some meaningful work, and I hope that we're making progress on our tree issues and the preservation and protection of those valuable resources on our island. One thing that's been mentioned, but not fully discussed, my colleague Natasha brought it up twice on Thursday, and that is the link between Oak Island stormwater requirements and tree preservation and protection. Friends, those two are inextricably linked. So I want to go on record, and I want to challenge the town administration to tap into resources that are readily available to Oak Island. We have universities in this state, to name one, NC State, with engineering programs, graduate students, doctoral students, who could help us on our stormwater issues. We have a great resource in this town with Rick Patterson. We have a great resource in this town with Rick Patterson. We should be grateful for his expertise and the changes that he's made already, getting rid of the popcorn in the ground, those kinds of things. And I would bet that he would probably welcome some more help. He's just one person, he can't do it all, and he's tasked with filling two roles. I'm not a stormwater expert, but in doing some limited reading, Oak Island is still using old technology. And that technology results in clearcutting, it results in damaging root systems, and it results in removing and damaging root mats. There is newer technology out there that is more cost-effective and less destructive to our trees. In fact, there are grants out there this year, 2023, to help with implementing those newer technologies. We should be applying for these grants, we, the town. And so I challenge our town administration to support the town, the stormwater manager by acting swiftly, getting engaged with emerging technologies. Clearcutting, because we have to have so many large pits in the ground, has to stop. We have to find a balance that is fair to our builders, that is cost-effective for builders and homeowners, and that also protects our trees. I want to have faith that Oak Island will do the right thing, and I challenge them to do so. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also provided the clerk and the board with a hard copy, excuse me, an electronic My comments all basically evolve around the same topic, and it's the using of zoning and the lack of, I mean, the, let's stop ignoring our zoning so that we can improve the town and stop the town on the trend that it's on. Okay? We're talking about UDO for trees and UDOs for the appearance and the future of our town. For the longest time, this was a blue-collar town with many, many workers and families and children, and then retirees came here, there was always a certain amount of vacation rentals, and I feel that the blue-collar workers and families are getting squeezed off the island, and they are being replaced by more of these mega hotels and the focus on tourism and vacationers. And we are getting an appearance, we're on a trend toward the Myrtle Beach look and feel, and our zoning doesn't stop it. And our zoning with the land use plan and so forth, we say that we would like to, but we need to work on that, and so we're ignoring our appearance. And so my board report talks about the negative and garish appearance. So it's, Myrtle Beach, it's, it's, it shows itself as excessive signage, bright colors and neon lights, lack of architectural coherence, over-commercialization, the abundance of souvenir shops, amusement arcades, and fast food chains. It detracts from the natural beauty, tacky tourist attractions, the gimmicky displays, the large-scale replicas, and so forth. There's an enormous economic benefit that we all, a rising tide raises all boats, to working on our community business appearance. We get increased property values. The business gets an increased property value, so don't we. Increased tourism, increased business investment, and increase in quality of life. Each one of these has some more detail on it, and as I said, I'll submit it, it's available for including in the board minutes. The short-term effects of ignoring the town's commercial districts, decreased property values, decreased tourism, decreased quality of life, just the opposite, right? The long-term, the long-term effects of ignoring it is we are going to lose our population. This becomes a rental town only, and fast food, and attractions. That results in a decreased tax revenue and a negative reputation. And so that's what best practice and planning and different reports, if you will, of what has happened in other areas. And this town needs to work on its zoning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bob. I think a lot of people feel the, are anxious that we may have gone over, certainly reached the tipping point between being a community that happens to have a beach or being a beach resort. And we've been a community that happens to have a beach, and I think most people want to keep it that way. Tim, board member report?
I completely agree with Terry. That was one of the first things that was near and dear to my heart when I was asked to be on the board, was cutting down trees that probably will use more water than what they're putting in the ground, and the implications with the storms and the popcorn that end up in Davis Canal, and basically blowing the systems out of the ground because they're not natural. And we're, our own process is keeping us from doing what we're trying to do, and also not just so much as seeing what trees have to be put back, but if we can preserve what we've already got, then you already know what grows, already know what's there and what's established. So I like to see us move more towards a common sense approach and just protect what we've already got.
Well, and many of the homes that were built and much of the development that came before some of these stormwater regulations were put in, had to be put into place. They certainly have a lot more trees, they don't have any of these pits or gadgets or what have you. Of course, there's a lot less impervious surface on many of them, but they're not creating any problems.
Look at Yopan.
Yeah, I know. I will just limit my report to reminding, I want to make sure, we use this time to make sure that we've got, in addition to whatever we have done today, that we have in place, and that we've made, I think we made motions on Thursday. The heritage tree, is that something that we're including in the overlay district?
I certainly hope so.
Okay. The permitting process that we talked about, Bob in particular talked very eloquently about when a site visit is made with the trees and that sort of thing, that we will have some ordinance-type language that comes back to us on that, as well as taking a look at the preliminary draft that Carrie presented to us on some of the tree protection and that kind of thing. So those two things, I think, can be in one agenda item because they both relate to additional amendments we wanted to make on what we've already sent forward to council. I would also like to add to that one thing, and that is, at least take a look at something that was in the article, kind of overviewing North Carolina Tree Ordinance Protection Approaches. And that was where, when you're preserving more trees, particularly in the front yard, or of a certain size, that you might, the incentive might be to make a reduction in a parking space requirement. And I think that's particularly important in the wooded section of town, because, again, before a certain point, there were only two parking spaces required for a single family, period. And that's still true in a lot of places in the state, but once we went to, for the new development, once we went to the habitable spaces, that greatly increased for some of the houses in the wooded area, the number of parking spaces required, and depending on the design of the house, that cost us a lot of trees right there. And so I'd like for staff to come back to us with something relating saving trees to parking spaces. And so that would be three things in that one section. And I want to, as I usually say, and didn't get a chance to say on our last regular meeting, I want to thank all, every member on this board for your input, for your engagement, for your concern for how things turn out in this town. It's a good board, and I appreciate you all very much. Matt, staff report?
Madam Chair, before Matt goes.
Yeah.
I appreciate you, staff, thank you for those remarks on behalf of all of us here. But you asked for a description of the approval process and how, when Rick Patterson would get involved in the inspections process of the site design.
I'm asking for a description, I'm asking for ordinance language that makes the, in other words, that probably changes what has been the approval process, that you bring in an application, you don't wait, and you go out then and check it.
So thank you, and I appreciate you asking for that. What I would like to add to that, if you could, is when you present it back to us, if you could put it in the form of a flow chart, obviously, we need the words, the text, but a flow chart would be great so that we could see who goes where and when an approval has to be given at which stages. I'm used to software, and that would be great to see.
Yeah.
When something actually comes out of the process, what the outputs are on the inspection. So I think it's great that you asked for that, I'd just like to see it in a flow chart.
That's fine, and I'll say something else. I think I said a couple of weeks ago, we probably, on the level of detail that I think is desired and probably required to improve the number of trees that, existing trees that we say, we're probably going to end up having to do in the multiple inspections that may be required, we're probably going to have to do an additional fee for that application piece, but we'll take a look at that, see how that plays out. And I'd like to get some thoughts from staff on that as well at that same time.
Sure.
All right. Staff reports. Matt?
Nothing I already touched on. One thing I was going to mention, I appreciate Mr. Callahan corrected my testimony in the last meeting. In addition, if you watched the last town council meeting, I don't think we mentioned it at this meeting, but the town was awarded a 50% matching grant from the North Carolina Forestry Service to complete a tree canopy assessment. That'll definitely be important data for ongoing discussions. Certainly, you know, as we look at, you know, in the future, should Town Council adopt an overlay district, similar to what we were talking about where we have separate sections, certainly the quality of the canopy in certain sections of town, you know, if we need to tweak it going forward, can be important information. So really excited to get to work on that process, but that's the only other update I have.
Lisa, you have anything?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Then Chair will entertain a motion. Wait a minute, before I do that, I do want to say again how much I appreciate the public engagement at this level, because, as I think I said to a couple of you before the meeting, anytime in the past that I remember, in the recent past, when tree amendments have come forward through the planning board and to the town council, there were no public comments. There was no public interest expressed. And I think particularly the folks that have been working on tree piece over the last, how many years? And I appreciate, you know, builders being involved in that process as well, and listening and hearing the discussions at this level before it goes to council. I think that makes it a much better process. And so I appreciate you guys, I thank you for showing up this morning, as well as last week, and I hope you will continue to do so. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.